I'm starting, Asanya. Everybody needs to mute.
All right, you ready, Pete? Ready? So let me know when we're good to go. Ready to start? All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, January, July 13, 2021. As always, this meeting is being video recorded. And I wanted to start by noting, we are holding this meeting at a very sad time for the town. And I wanted to note the passing of Captain Mike Harmon of the Medfield Fire Department on Saturday at the age of 42. This has been a great loss to all of us and to the town. Mike was originally hired as a call firefighter. In January of 2003, he became a full-time firefighter and EMT in 2005. He was promoted to lieutenant in July of 2014 and became a captain recently. He's been the president of the union locals since November of 2016. He's been our fire prevention and code enforcement officer since September of 2017. And he stood up and has been running the fire cadet program since September of 2019. He delivered a baby in the parking lot of the public safety building. He was slated to receive a condemnation or award for life-saving as part of the team of first responders who saved the life of a motorcycle rider on Main Street recently, or on South Street of Main Street recently. On a personal note, he's responded to calls at my house most recently in the storm at the beginning of the pandemic last year, when we had a couple of trees that were imminently and eventually falling over the power lines on Main Street. And as the union president for the last two collective bargaining sessions, he's been on the other side of the table. It's not always a kumbaya moment, but Mike was always a straight shooter and honest and great to deal with and advocating for his members. In a crisis situation, he was a force of reassurance and competence and confidence and arriving in very difficult circumstances. So I want to extend, on behalf of the board and the town, our condolences to his wife, Sue, his family, and all of the firefighters and first responders and the people in the town who are going to miss him terribly. He loved this town. He served this town with great dedication, and the town loved him back. The flags at our buildings will fly at half-staff through his funeral next Wednesday. And I'd ask that everyone join me in a moment of silence in honor of Captain Mike Harmon. Thank you. I note his wake is going to be on Tuesday, July 20, next Tuesday, at 4:00 at the Roberts Mitchell Crusoe Funeral Home here in Medfield. So just to note, we are under a hybrid setup again this evening. So if anybody is on Zoom and wishes to participate on any of the items as we're going through, please just put your name and your address in the Q and A. And whether you want to be promoted to speak live or just have your comments taken in the Q and A, just let me know, and I'll keep an eye on it up here as we go through. All right. So we'll begin. Our first appointment is with Mo Galley, continuing his string of, starting at the beginning of meetings. Welcome, Mo. Would you take us through the contracts and the items that you have for us?
So, good evening. These four contracts are associated with the water treatment facility. One contract is for the owner's project manager with Woodard and Curran. Secondary contract with Woodard and Curran for the SCADA implementation, which is our security for our water. Also, the contract for environmental partners as our resident engineer on the project. And the contract with the general contractor, Bizco Building Systems from Fall River that was awarded at the last meeting.
Any questions or comments, Pete?
Just one. Just to recall, when we talked about this before, the two Woodard and Curran contracts, the first one is not looking at the SCADA. The second one is focused on the SCADA, and the two teams are independent. So it's, on the surface, it's a weird contract with the same company to do both the oversight.
They're both isolated, for sure.
This is the issue. We had talked about this with Water and Swirblown.
I'm just confirming that that's still, actually, I'm confirming that my memory hasn't completely deteriorated.
You're right on. You're right on.
All right. And I didn't have any questions or comments. Mark or Christine, anything, anybody? I don't think we have any comments.
I approve some of your contracts.
All right. And you're satisfied with Town Council's review of the contracts? All right. We should probably take these one at a time, then. Motion to approve each of these in order.
I move that we approve the contract with Woodard and Curran in the amount of $195,000 for owner's project management, manager services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nope. All right, next.
I move that we approve the contract with Woodard and Curran in the amount of $222,000 for SCADA systems engineering.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes?
I move that we approve the contract with environmental partners in the amount of $1,436,000 for resident engineering services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And one more. The Bizco.
The Bizco. I move that we approve the contract with Bizco Building Systems, Inc., in the amount of $8,279,142.99 for the general contract for the water treatment plant project.
All in favor? Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Well, do you know if Bizco is someone's name? Or not? I didn't know if it was someone's name or if they wanted to call it Bizco, and this was the only spelling that wasn't left in the...
I'm assuming it's...
Someone's name?
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to know if they made it 99 cents, so it would be a whole $143.
I love that kind of precision.
Mike Bizco is the owner.
Mike Bizco, there's the answer. All right, terrific. Well, it's an excellent name for a business. Really is. All right, next up, Kathy McDonald. Kathy appearing virtually.
Kathy is going to appear virtually. Let me just promote her.
Everybody.
You've switched backgrounds, Kathy.
I have. Yes, I'm from the home office right now. You're right. I'm just, you know, can I request that you could promote Mary Haas through also in case you have any questions on the CADCA MOU?
I don't see Mary here. Is Mary coming in under Medfield outreach?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. We may not need her, but just in case you have any questions. Thank you. Do you want me just to go ahead, or do you want to announce what it is, Christine?
So the first request is a request to sign the memorandum of understanding between Medfield Cares About Prevention Coalition slash the Town of Medfield and the Community Anti-Drug Coalitions of America, aka CADCA. Item one.
Correct. So we would just respectfully ask that you consider signing a, what is a three-year memorandum of understanding between the town and CADCA to do data collection over the next three years, which is the balance of the life of our DFC grant that we have left over from our Drug-Free Communities grant, which was originally sponsored by SAMSA and now has been taken over by the CBC. And part of our requirements in that grant is for good data collection to establish and to demonstrate that the work that we're doing through the funding in that grant is proving effective and useful in reducing substance use amongst adolescents in our community.
Questions, comments, Pete?
The only question I have, Kathy, is, in the data collection that they've done so far under this grant, is there anything of note that we've discovered from the data that we've collected so far?
Well, we did a really thorough survey of all the middle schoolers and all the high schoolers back in December of 2020, which indicated that anxiety and depression is still major players in our adolescents' lives and that substance use, good news was, and we could give you specifics, we're happy to, actually, Mary, we're fearless to present that data to you in detail, but the upshot is that substance abuse during the pandemic by minors was down, probably because of supervision of parents being home. But mental health issues are high, and suicidality was disproportionately high among people who identify as LGBTQ plus population. We had a relationship with a different data vendor, if you will, that we completed our partnership with and would like to move in this different direction because CADCA is part of the grant, and they know exactly the data that they're looking for to demonstrate effectiveness. So it's sort of, is in our best interest to use the group that will be then looking at the effectiveness of our work so that they will help us capture the right data to demonstrate the effectiveness of the work we're doing, which hopefully will put us in a good position at the end of those five years to apply for a continuation, a competitive continuation for an additional five years. So we think it's in our best interest to use CADCA going forward.
That was, actually, was just thinking, people might be interested in hearing the answer to the question, so it wasn't a challenge to your request. But I did recall, if I'm recalling the correct grant, that one of the things that stuck in my head when we first started this was the idea that we were collecting data on the effectiveness of what we were doing. So I appreciate your comment on that. Hopefully, in a year, we'll, either we'll find out we're effective or ineffective, but one way or the other, we'll have some insights into that piece of it.
Absolutely. And the one great thing about CADCA is this partnership will allow us to use all sorts of data collection techniques and programming that we wouldn't otherwise have access to. So not only do they allow us to use sophisticated software and programs, but they have the training in how to crunch those numbers, how to capture it in a way that makes it, I guess, more measurable, more reliable, more valid. And then they allow us to own that data. So it's quite a generous contract, really. We've asked a lot of thorough questions about intellectual property, et cetera, and they've answered it all in ways that certainly meet our comfort level. And, you know, I guess, Gus, to answer you a little more clearly, there's so many different data points to measure. Some is, from the adolescent perspective, we still need to do some focus groups on adults and the culture of adults in parenting. So this work is sort of really, Mary's been on board just about over a year, right around a year, actually, right about a year right now, and is really, I'm really impressed with the work she's been able to get done in the midst of a pandemic. And I really am excited about the work that we will continue to get done now that things are sort of resuming back to more of a normal sort of pace within the schools and with students and our ability to interact with people on a more interpersonal level. So the data will keep coming at you, Gus, don't you worry. We'll have lots of data to share.
Yeah, but this is a long-range editorial comment, my uneducated view on what we've done for several years around this, not just the last couple, is we collect data. I can predict that the data will say we have a problem that's either worse or getting no better. And what I liked in particular, when this particular grant came up, is the data that was, we were looking for was data on effectiveness. And I don't care if the data shows we're being effective or we're being ineffective, but what I've seen over the years, you know, going way back, is that most of the time the data is substantiating the problem more than providing feedback on the actions. And so that's where my interest lies, long-term, is, are we doing stuff that works? Are we doing stuff that doesn't work? And, you know, from everything I've read about this area, my expectations aren't excessively high about how good we can be at this, but it would be kind of nice to know one way or the other, which way, whether we're headed uphill or downhill.
Yeah, and I really hope that the, I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate it. I really hope that this, you know, these DFC grants are provided to communities that can demonstrate that their adolescent use of substances is an anomaly in the area. And sadly, Medfield proved that to be true with the information from the 2018 Metro West Adolescent Health Survey. And these are flexible but well-established grants that seem to prove their effectiveness in many communities, which is why they continue to get funding through the government. So I'm hopeful, fingers crossed, that our community will also demonstrate that it's been effective here, too. But it does take time, which is why they give you the opportunity to reapply at year five for a 10-year go at this. It takes a long time to change norms and impact culture and identify what barriers are and to promote protective factors, et cetera. So we have our work cut out for us, for sure.
Okay, thanks. That's all.
Anything else on this? Anybody? If we have any comments, so I'll take a motion, Gus.
Okay, I move that we approve signing the memorandum of understanding between Medfield Cares About Prevention Coalition slash the Town of Medfield and the Community Anti-Drug Coalitions of America, CADCA.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. Next request to sign renewal of clinical consulting contract with Rona Kirins for the fiscal year 2022.
Yeah, thank you. This is very simple. It's just a continuation. I think you all signed a 10-hour contract for the balance of fiscal year '21, and I'm just looking to do the same thing for fiscal year '22, with the exception of it being 40 hours where we're, you know, have a whole year ahead of us.
Pete, any questions? Comments?
No questions.
All right, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve signing the renewal of clinical consulting contract with Rona Kirins, licensed social worker for fiscal year 2022.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. And finally, a request for ARPA funding for renewal of the Interface contract. Kathy, is this the, like, this is the $8,500? Is that what it is, $8,000? What's the number on this?
Yes. So right now, the cost is $13,000, but we anticipate, based on other communities and the feedback that other communities have been sharing with me, is that we can expect that the rate is going to go up. We received our most recent biannual usage report, and the calls from December to the end of May doubled, almost doubled, just shy of doubled, to Interface. And so they give that a dollar value, and they estimate the sort of, the value you're getting out of this contract, which is higher than the current $13,000 we're paying. So I anticipate, I tried to get information about what it was going to be raised to and didn't get an answer, but I've heard that other communities, it was raised a few thousand dollars. So currently, we're up for renewal in November. The last couple of years, it's been $13,000. I do anticipate that's going to go up, the exact number, I can't tell you for sure, obviously.
But is the request to pay the full amount of the Interface contract with the ARPA funds or to pay a portion of it? That's the part, I don't know why I had $8,000 in my head.
That's what we had originally talked about before we got word it might be increased.
Okay. But so what, how much are you looking for is the question now? Is it eight? Is it 13? Is it 13 plus whatever it's going to be? Is it the whole, I mean, I just want to know what we're talking about.
Well, in full disclosure, we did get $5,000 from the DA to help offset the expense. They allowed three different sort of options that you could apply for a $5,000 grant, and Medfield did get one of those $5,000 grants, and we selected that that would go towards renewal of Interface. So we do have $5,000 that we know can be utilized towards that. You know, again, rumors are rumors, but I had heard it might be up to $16,000. So it could be more, it could be less. I don't know how much they're going to raise it. Like I said, I did ask Interface what they anticipated the renewal to be, as I was going to ask for funds this evening, and I didn't go back to them for this meeting. So if it goes up to 16, I would love 11. Yeah.
That's where, so that's where I got the eight from, because I was remembering the five. So you're looking at the difference between the five and the total. So somewhere between eight and 12 or whatever, something, okay. That's okay. All right. So the actual ARPA request is between eight and 12, let's say.
Yes, thank you.
Pete, any questions? And you don't have a microphone, so I'll share my microphone.
I hadn't even noticed. Thank you. No, I think, I think that Interface seems to be, I think, is working well for the town. It's interesting to hear that the, the usage has doubled in the, in the past year. So I think it's a, it's a very valuable service for the town. Originally, the school paid for part of it, I think, or the police department might have even paid for part of it the first year.
Yes, so the last two, the last three years, possibly longer, one of the things that the Coalition for Suicide Prevention is very proud of is that it raises funds through our local health providers in Metro West to contribute money to cost share at the expense of this. So while the school usually pays proportion of the service upfront, we try to reimburse the school, we being members of the Coalition for Suicide Prevention, try to raise the money and pay back the school so that it's something that our coalition pays for.
And, you know, and the coalitions have been very successful at doing that, so congratulations.
Yeah, and this money, should we get it from the ARPA funds, will allow the coalition to use that money towards other programs, speakers and reduction of stigma, other sort of activities to promote well-being and promote mental health and services. So we will certainly continue our mission and use that money for other mental health promoting activities.
That's it for me. Thank you. Couple, I guess, process questions. So this is ARPA funding. Help me with the acronyms. ARPA...
This is, we had CARES funding originally, and now we have...
This is the second phase of COVID. So first point is, this money we're talking about is not money that's coming from the town, it's the money that's coming in as aid.
Correct. This is the, this is the $1.3 million coming in.
Okay.
And that would be the American Rescue Plan Act.
That's, that's what I was looking for. Okay. Second, I'm guessing before, in my motion, we're going to approve a number not to exceed $11,000 to cover the difference in whatever is due, is the way we'll, I'll frame the motion. Okay. And then that $11,000 is a number the town can afford out of the ARPA fund, out of the $1.3 million, we're okay with that?
I think we're okay with the $11,000.
Okay.
I think, of all the things we've talked about funding, we know that COVID had an impact on the mental health.
Yeah, yeah, no, no arguments.
Related to that, so.
This is purely administrative, is the motion maker, to make sure I've got this clear.
We have the money.
Okay.
And I would just suggest that we give them up to 12, just in case. That would be my suggestion. But you are the motion maker, and so I'm not going to...
I would, I would, I would defer to the chair of the...
I would say 12.
Board here on what we do. So we'll do not to exceed $12,000.
Are you okay with that, Kathy?
Yeah, I'd love that, because if it does, if it's raised slightly above 16, that gives us a little wiggle room. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, if you love it, then we're definitely going to do it, so.
Christine, you're good with the additional $1,000 out of the $1.3 million.
I can cover that.
All right. You ready?
I'm ready.
I move that we approve ARPA funding in an amount not to exceed $12,000 to cover the balance due on the renewal of the Interface contract.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, passes. Anything else, Kathy?
No, I appreciate it. Thanks very much for your time, everybody.
Well, thank you both for joining us. All right.
We have a good night.
All right. Next item is a, and I should note that at the end of this meeting, we will go into an executive session to discuss the purchase exchange of lease of property on Ice House Road, and the open session will not resume after the conclusion of the executive session. All right. The next item is a confirmatory vote on the town administrator's goals for FY 2022, provisionally adopted at our last meeting. Any questions, comments, or discussion on this? Gus?
I do. None of my comments need to prevent us from approving your goals, but if any of these have merit. Goal 5B, update financial policy to include formalized tests. Is it formalized? Is it simplified? Is it more intuitive? I'm just, I'm trying to understand what formalized means in this context.
We have adopted a test due by the Warren Committee that we have shared with the Board of Selectmen, but we have not adopted it formally. So it's just...
Okay. So, so the, and looking back to the town meeting, I'm assuming our goal is to clearly describe it, officially adopt it, and therefore make it available to any citizens of the town who want to review how we've determined we've complied with our financial policies.
Correct. And the test that we have adopted by the Warren Committee is on the website now for anybody to view prior to town meeting as well.
Right. Okay. Then on item, goal seven, the only issue I thought before I had, there's an example, you know, create a new welcome section on the website with basic information. I think in the last meeting, I had mentioned also finding a way to get a clearer linkage between the town website and the school website. I don't care if it's formally documented, as long as either I understand that's not something we want to do or that it is something we want to do.
No, that's fine. And actually, I just noticed, letter C under six should be moved to, to goal seven.
Okay. Yeah, good point.
But we, I will add that in there as well.
Okay. Then the, this is actually a question for Mike and Pete. Under goal eight, the ideas of policies and procedures, we have at a minimum car wash policy, flag policy, municipal building grounds use policies to be presented to the Board of Selectmen. I would like to see us establish an external communications policy as well. So I realize that's just an example. So I realize that's just an example, but that one has been of concern to me.
So we can add that to the specific list?
Yeah, that's what, if you would.
Are you okay with that, Pete?
Sure.
Goal nine, oh, the question I had here, recommend an update process for adoption of personnel policies. I wrote down, I need to be clear about the issue this is addressing. And that's, yeah, it's my memory perhaps, but.
No, so the issue right now is all policies need to be approved by town meeting. So we ran into this issue during COVID where we needed to adopt remote work policies, and we were not able to adopt those formal policies, because right now, town meeting would need to do that. So we had some emergency provision policies in place, but we'd like to come up with, is that the proper way to be doing that?
Yeah.
And we haven't revisited that since about 1967.
Okay, and then final, if the, if the labor relations goal was there before, I don't remember seeing it, but it, the, the goal is initiate and complete collective bargaining sessions prior to the expiration of the contract. The question I have, is this a goal you can actually control, particularly the complete side of it?
That's why we put as 10A, is what will qualify satisfying the goal. So in other words, if we, if we submit, and the judgment of the board is a fair and reasonable offer.
Okay.
And the unions say no, then we've achieved the goal. We can't force them to say yes. But this is just to give us as a goal, and give Christine as a goal, actually getting these contracts done before they expire.
Okay, your explanation just answered my follow-on question under A, which is submission of a fair and reasonable offer, and I said, who determines this? And it's the three of us.
Three of us will determine. If we think that we've made a fair and reasonable offer, which presumably, we will determine that, because we're the ones making the offer.
And we're smart.
Then Christine has satisfied the goal and, and, you know, that's what.
Okay, so none of my comments would in any way prevent us from approving these goals. I think you incorporated the editorial ones, and you've answered my questions, so.
Okay, then we have a motion.
I move that we approve the FY 22 goals with the minor modifications discussed here in regard to the town administrator's performance for this fiscal year.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. Next, Medfield State Hospital's status update. Who is going to be our status updater?
I will, I will let Bill give his perceptions on it, but I will just give the, the background. After our last meeting, we had told you that we were meeting with DCAM later that week. We met on July 1st. DCAM was open to the town setting the agenda for that evening, which was great, so we were able to talk about the AUL, the road access, the overlook condition, and the laundry parcel. It was nice to get everybody on Zoom, we weren't all in the same room, but it was nice to get everybody back to the table, per se, and start moving forward. That being said, I don't think we're happy with everything that was reported back from DCAM, so we have our tasks cut out for us. They are ready to present the road access in August or September to us. Once they do that, it'll be about 12 weeks from design, they would be able to begin construction. And the laundry parcel cleanup is moving forward. We were hoping for a quicker timeline than we got, but it's hard for me to complain about that when a lot of our projects have been slowed down by COVID as well, so I'm trying to give everybody the benefit of the doubt on that, but I know. So we are looking at, they're still advertising the bid, so we're talking about, they won't award the contracts till mid-September. It's not going to be ready until spring, and if I have any indication, it's probably summer of '22 before the construction's completed, which means it, you know, moves the timeline for when we can have that parcel turned over to us as well, so. But I will defer to Bill for his concerns as well.
You do need a microphone.
All right, so it was good to have DCAM offer to have the month, restart the monthly meetings again. So we had agreed in the land disposition, excuse me, in the settlement agreement, that we would attempt to maintain the cooperation between all of the parties, the town and the public, with meetings, regular meetings. And with the changes of personnel and everything else, we prob, with the new person who replaced John O'Donnell, we probably had about four meetings, and they weren't very productive because it was mostly bringing the new person up to speed. That person left, there were more changes at DCAM, and then COVID came in and whacked everybody fairly hard. So it's good that we got a chance now to get these meetings started again. We'll have to see whether this is just, you know, a repeat of the last time, or whether there's, you know, it's going to continue or not. I believe that I sent every, all of the selectmen list of my summary of what I thought happened at the meetings. As far as the town is concerned, a couple of the things Christine touched on, so remediation slipped about three months, and there really was no reason for that, but I suspect it had to do with them wanting to do another round of monitoring wells and testing and running it through the labs. The surprising thing that came out of that is that they found a well that has historically not had any exceedances of the PCEs, now has an exceedance, and they were not sure as to whether that was on the laundry parcel or whether it's on the town parcel. There are issues for the town if it's on the town parcel. One of the things we had advertised in the RFP was that there were no MCP issues on, on the town parcel, so we'll have to see what happens with that. It might be as simple as going back and revising the, the LDA or whatever to increase the size of the laundry parcel, but we'll have to see what happens. I sent DCAM a copy of the maps that we had that showed that it was in fact, I want to say maybe 10, 15 feet outside of the laundry parcel on our, our parcel. So we'll have to see what, what the impact of that is. For the moment, they're going to, they're going to remediate it, so, you know, we're, I'm more concerned about the long-term issue and the impact on, you know, what do we do with the core property? How do we advertise the core property? What do we have to tell the developer? But we have time. So basically, the three months slipped, they're going to have to take the winter off because they can't do anything in the winter. I had projected, and that went out in the RFP, that the effort would be complete somewhere around, at the earliest, assuming all of the testing after they finished remediation shows that it was successful, they need eight consecutive quarters or two years of, of clear lab results. I had projected that it would be done somewhere around January of 2024. I would probably push that out now, at least, you know, maybe three to six months. So the earliest we have the laundry parcel, assuming that it is fixable, is somewhere, you know, close to mid-2024. Again, we'll have to assess if there's a risk there, impact there, anything else. You really aren't going to know until they finish the remediation and get at least one quarter of testing. That'll give you an indication of what's going to happen from there. The, the next thing I think is the.
Can I?
Yeah.
Can I hear your questions on that in particular?
Interrupt.
It sounds like the well you're talking about, you said, is like maybe 10 feet beyond the current designated laundry parcel. So from a square footage standpoint, if we expanded that, it would, from what, I'm, I'm coming from the development committee's perspective here. From a square footage perspective, we're not taking a significant chunk out of the developable, developable property.
No.
Are there other wells on our property that are farther? If I did a, I don't, this may not be a fair question to ask you.
No, sorry.
The wells that are on the current laundry parcel that reflected the VOCs. We now have potentially a well on the town property that has VOC. Are there any other wells in the direction of where that well on our property is that are farther on our property that will give us any insight on where there's migration?
No, I don't, I don't believe there are. I think this was a fluke. In fact, I did a spreadsheet on all of the wells in the area of the laundry parcel, going back, I want to say, four or five years and everything else, and this one, it was a shock. I mean, it was either too low to detect anything, or the numbers were somewhere around one. They didn't tell us what the new number is, but it's anything over five that's a problem. So they've, they've said they would send, you know, it almost doesn't matter what the number is, they're going to treat it just like they're treating a well that has a, has a terribly high exceedance. They're going to dig it out, they're going to replace it. Now, as I said before, it's probably, I don't know, 100 square feet maybe, at the most. The issue is, you're going to have to do something deed-wise or whatever to, I think, maybe to change it. But we can look at that. I mean, it's not going to, you know, you're not taking 100 acres or nine acres or 10 acres out of the core, the core campus. It's very small. It might require rerouting of the road. DCAM has said that when they're doing their cleanup here and everything else for the road to the overlook, I'm talking about the one that comes down along the front of the laundry parcel and goes to the existing road, down to the new launch and everything else, that will be blocked off by a fence during their work. At this meeting, last week, we learned that they're willing to, to make a road extension around their fence to get the people down to the, so that won't affect the public, won't affect the trails, won't affect anything else. The public, public access road, you will recall that we had some issues with DCAM probably about a year and a half to two years ago, where they decided they were going to put it on the, the old power plant road along the river, and we had the stakeholders and the town and everybody else had said that's not, you know, it's not acceptable, it was not what we agreed to in the mediation or anything else. I have a rough presentation from DCAM, and I've asked for just a couple of clarifications on what a couple of the slides are showing, and I'd like to take it to the stakeholders before you approve it, so that, you know, we have some, at least, I'm not expecting any issues. They put it where we wanted it, and they threw in the parking lot that we put as a cherry on top of the ice cream sundae that we wanted, and it looks like we got it. So, so that's, that's good. Now, 12, 12 weeks, I'm not sure, it'll be 12 weeks after your approval, I would hope, if, I will go out over the next couple of weeks and get the responses from the, from the stakeholders, and those specifically are the Charles River Waterset Association, the Trustees of Reservations, and the Charles River Link Trail. They have been asking me where it stands, so I don't expect any issues in getting their approval.
It's a dumb question, but what are the, what's the Trustees of Reservations' interest in that particular property?
Well, because they're one of the original parties to the negotiations and the cleanup, so.
They don't have, they're not, they don't have any land there, they're just.
No, but it's, you know, well, it butts their land, so I mean, their issue, you know, they, they're concerned about the, the length of the trails and, you know, what happens, you know, so.
They have that property in Sherburne on the other side.
On the other side.
Yeah, so as I said, I'm not, I shouldn't say it, because you call for the devil and he jumps up, but I, I'm not expecting any issues. It's pretty much what we asked for, and so I shouldn't see any problems there. The activity and use limitation is a problem, and you will recall that I had brought it up, you know, roughly a year ago, that in spite of our last round of suggestions and recommendations and corrections of the errors in the activity and use limitation, DCAM went and filed it. And I had talked to DEP, and they were also surprised that, given the relationship that we had had in the past, that this occurred, but that DEP would talk to DCAM. Ultimately, looking to, I would suspect, a refiling, correction and refiling of the AUL. We got a surprise at the meeting. Appears that DEP did an audit of the, of the activity and use limitation. They found it wanting administratively, and they found, I think, some issues on the site. John Thompson and I were somewhat upset that we weren't invited, since we've had issues with DCAM for the delineation of, of where the overlook is, whether there are trees growing on land that's, DCAM was responsible for or not and everything else, and then to have DCAM guide the tour was somewhat disconcerting. I, I've voiced my concerns to, to DEP, we'll see what happens. And I've also asked for a copy of, although DCAM has said they would give us a copy of the comments, I, I'm hoping to get an unlaundered list of the, of the comments before we see that, so I've asked for those. 12 weeks after your approval, excuse me, I'm, just jumped back, let me rephrase that. So back on the activity and use limitation. So hopefully, we will be able to get that resolved, get it corrected, and get it resubmitted. I'll let you know what happens when I see the, what were the results of the audit, and when I talk more with DEP. And then the last thing is, we have had continual disagreements over the status of the maintenance, vegetation, and what have you. I brought the subject up again, John Thompson brought the subject up again. We basically got agreement that they would look at the rain gardens, which are grossly overgrown, essentially not acting as they should, you know, exacerbating erosion, what have you. They said that they were working with Weston and Sampson to come up with a maintenance plan for that. So that at least is, we will continue to push the rest of the vegetation issues. If you looked at the overlook, you know, none of the plantings, basically, that got established, you know, the garden continuum worked so hard on to establish, and survived. There was a requirement in the order conditions that for five-year survivability, it's something along the lines of like 90% of the plants were supposed to survive, whatever is the goal, nothing survived. We'll talk with Concom about, you know, if we have any options to, to go back and see if we can get stuff replanted or not, but it's, it'll be an ongoing battle for a while. And then we also have issue in the river, they were supposed to be monitoring for invasives. They were supposed to build a 10-foot by 10-foot box and then have a wetland specialist continually monitor it over the course of like two or three years after they finished the work to determine if invasives were in there. I, I don't believe that was ever done, I don't think Concom ever saw a report on it. And there are lots of invasives in the, in the wetlands, so, again, probably not something we can do anything about, but we at least need to at least pursue it and see what happens.
Is there, is there any opportunity to ask DCAM to let us administer the maintenance?
You absolutely.
They pay for it?
No, they're not going to pay for it, and you absolutely don't, I have the whole idea, you know, you don't want responsibility for that. The, the issue of the AUL.
I don't, I don't want to be doing it, but I, I'd like it done right.
No, but we, the reason that I've been arguing so hard for this over the last, what, four or five years now and everything else, is if you think about it, we're, we're trying to memorialize the care and protection of hazardous material and keep the public safe, and DCAM signed up to do this in perpetuity, and if we can't get them to, to at least get their procedures established and recognize what the size of the area is, what their responsibilities are, if we can't do that now, how are we going to do it 10 years from now, or 20 years from now, or 30 years from now? So that's, that's why this is important, and that's why we're pushing it so hard. It's safe if it's maintained, if the right uses are there. One of the activity and use limitations we argued against is that you can build a school there as long as you don't go under, go through the cap, and for, for five years, we've been saying that's insane and had to come out of there, and it's still in there. So these are the, these are the issues that we're trying, we're trying to push. So we'll keep you up, I'll keep you informed. If we have our monthly meetings, I'll send you my notes, or Christine will, you know, send them to you and see what we can do.
Thanks, Bill. Pete, any questions, comments?
No.
So I guess the, my only question, Bill, is, and Christine, is there an action item for us coming out of this, or at this point, are we going to?
You'll, you'll have something to approve, I would, I don't have one, but.
No, I think the only action item coming out of this is we need to work together to set a date for them to come in to present the access road, which they indicated they'd be ready towards the end of August to do that, so we'll find some time on the agenda and have them in.
And so you'll, in the interim, I mean, the next thing we need them to do is the, the next stage of the mowing, right, on the overlook, and is that the?
Well, they mowed in, I think, the day, the day or two days before the audit, they mowed.
It's just a coincidence.
It's coincidences.
But I thought, I thought I saw in the notes that they didn't mow the whole area they're supposed to mow.
Well, we're going to keep working on that.
I thought that was, did I misremembering that, or?
No, there's, there's.
There's some unmoed area.
Unmoed areas.
Some unmoed gray area.
Right, and there's, there's concern about, they didn't mow those because there are some nesting birds and other creatures, and they will mow those afterwards, so we're, we're working with them on the vegetation.
Okay.
Are those, do those areas include the, and vined bike rack and the, the tall stuff that's down at the bot, you know, if you go down toward the boat launch and you get the circle there, the three to four-foot tall stuff, is that also part of what's in dispute, or is nobody responsible?
Yes, the area, the area between the road at the bottom of the overlook.
Yeah.
And the water, the, the area over the pipeline, the area going up to the pipeline and everything else, that's one of the disputed areas. else, that's one of the disputed areas. And we are, again, we are continuing to push to get that done. As far as the bike rack goes, if we get them started on the road, the road will come in at the bike rack, just so I understand. I mean, I fought with DCAM to get the parking lot constructed in such a way as that it would be able to accommodate, you know, a future, the future road, so it will come in there, so...
All right. Thank you, Bill. Anything else in the hospital for anybody? I don't see any comments on Zoom. All right, Board of Selectmen Goals discussion.
You were going to start discussing your fiscal year '22 goals.
Okay. Peter Gus, goals?
I saw the item, I didn't see any materials to go with it. I do have one, if we're going to do this, I have one comment. I think we should take the town goals, review them and decide whether we want to change them. The idea that the Townwide Master Plan apparently didn't even see them having enough merit to even be looked at is disturbing to me, because the whole point of getting those goals out there was to establish a set of town goals, not cast in stone, but as a touch point that everybody could go to, and if they wanted to change them, we could have rational, objective, legitimate discussions about changing them. So if we've buried the town goals to the point where nobody knows they're there, then perhaps we should incorporate that into whatever review we do of our own goals.
All right. So I will confess that I have not done my homework in this particular piece of the goals. I do recall asking us to do the homework, and I didn't do mine, so I apologize. But I think what I'm talking about in this item is what are, under the 2018, 2019 Selectmen Goals, update those. Are those the ones you're talking about, Gus? These right here?
Yeah, actually, they are.
Are these the ones we're talking about?
I called them the town goals, but, because they're not all just Selectmen Goals, but yeah.
Well, I think whatever the headline is on the website, that's what they are, so I think that's the official designation.
Good.
So I mean, I think...
Glad to see you're paying attention to the mic.
No, that's, well, because I...
My face was somewhat damaged during the passage.
Yeah, no, so, well, that was sort of my mild kind of, they were 2018, 2019, so I was thinking we should update them to 21, 22. But we are talking about this, but then we also have, because separately, Gus, we have the draft strategic town goals, which are these. Now, with the Selectmen Goals, we took the, so this, this strategic town goals are here, right, and then we took the strategic town goals and then applied for us to 2018, 2019. So my view of this was, we were updating our goals, our implementation of the draft strategic town goals, not updating the draft strategic town goals. I'm happy to do both, but I thought this would be a little bit, kind of at a lower level than the lofty aspirations of the draft strategic town goals. That's what I was talking about, kind of what we have here is the 2018, 2019 town goals, which we've actually achieved a lot of them. I was favorably impressed with our ability to achieve the goals we had set for ourselves in that process. But I wasn't thinking that we were looking at the draft strategic town goals, I'm happy to look at both either, but I was thinking it was this document here that we were, and really looking at the...
If we're working on that document, you've covered my point. The only reaction I would have to that is, we do have a Townwide Master Plan that came up with a set of goals. That set of goals was 80%, they used a different process, and they got to a largely similar set of goals, 80, 80%, 80% of it. We've had these goals for, for, also, these are 18, 19, and we were working when I first, that was one of the very first things that I put on the agenda when I first became a Selectman in my first term. It's probably worth the three of us thinking about whether any of those major goals, you know, lots happened in three, four years, it's at least worth looking at those goals to see if either, I'm not sure that the goals, I'm not sure that any of those goals will be determined to be bad, but it wouldn't surprise me for us to say maybe we should revise the goal to reflect some of the issues that we're dealing with today that we were dealing with three or four years ago, so. I don't think that's a major piece of work beyond what you're asking for here, and if you haven't done your homework, I haven't done my homework, so...
I have not. I've looked at them, and I will say that I've been, my, the hours of townwork over the last six weeks have been focused on other, other items, unfortunately, so, all right, so maybe we can add this as an agenda item for August 3 to talk about. I think, I mean, some of these are going to be goals that will intersect with Christine's goals for the year, and then some of these are just, I mean, we have done a lot of these things, so we've done a lot of these things, some of them I think probably ought to stay on the list because we haven't gotten to them yet, and then we may maybe have some new ones, but, so, but we have, we have achieved a number of them, so, all right. And I do think it would be a worthwhile exercise, I mean, at some point, I mean, at some point there's going to be a formal adoption of the, or a vote on the adoption of the Townwide Master Plan, so it would make sense to kind of, to the extent there's, in this 80/20, you know, to the extent there's some distance there to kind of reconcile those and line up our specific goals with those overall, overall goals. Okay. That's a shorter discussion. This next one will be a shorter discussion as well. We had a request from Nancy Irwin to increase the size of the Transfer Station Recycling Committee. I think she's resolved that issue on the committee herself, some people have stepped down and are going to be replaced at some point, so she's no longer requesting an increase in the size of the committee. I think she found, as a number of us do, as the committee gets bigger, the finding a quorum becomes a more daunting task, and so she's going to, wants to leave it at the same number. All right, next item up is, vote to support the Hinkley South project submitted to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development as a local initiative program project for a 24-unit, age-restricted, 62-plus development, subject to final purchase and sales agreement, and authorize the chair to sign the lip application and submit a letter of support to DHCD.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. People will recuse themselves. I know we do have a couple of people here who I'm sure are looking to talk about this, so if you're looking to talk about this and you're out in Zoom land, just let us know if you want to be promoted for comment or to weigh in via the Q&amp;A function, and we'll take care of that.
Would you like me to recognize, I have Jim Murphy and Bob Barelli here to talk to the Selectmen about the project.
Okay, great.
Hello.
Are we waiting for Bob, or ready to start, Jim?
Oh, we're not waiting for Bob, I just was waiting for a cue from the chair.
Yeah, well, I'm queuing you away, we can start.
This is the next step in the process for the development of the 24 units on the Hinkley South parcel. We have, as you probably recall, submitted an RFP back in the February and March period of time, were selected as recommended applicant by the Federal Housing Trust. Thereafter, there were some changes suggested to the footprint of the parcel that were adopted by town meeting, and thereafter, we again met with the neighbors, and we also met with the AHT. Did you get the AHT support, which I think there's a memo in your packet from them concerning it? We are asking for the Selectmen to authorize Town Council to furnish to us a draft purchase and sale agreement. I also understand from Sarah Opaza that there is a proposed memorandum of understanding that we're also prepared to go forward with, and we think that those documents fairly depict what it is that we're asking for and what it is that we would next do. We expect that as part of the purchase and sale agreement attached to it would be a signed memorandum of understanding, there would also be a signed DHCD application to be submitted to DHCD with a letter of support from the Board of Selectmen. We're available to answer any questions tonight, and if there's any other specifics, we largely not redone any of our plans and, from the last iteration, which was in June of 2021, we were forced to get signals from the town that they're prepared to go forward on purchase and sale agreement before we restart all of our consultants and bring on board, among others, a landscape partner.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Murphy Gus. Questions, comments?
So we've had one discussion on this, and I think there's, and Mark, you and I have exchanged some things. I see at least two, two of the three issues that I had raised are clarified, at least in what we have in the agenda items, 24 units, 62+, which solves that. The only issue that we had talked about that I don't, I'm not sure whether this is the place where it has to be resolved, or whether it's the subsequent agreement that has to be resolved. The question is, with this particular development, there's two different formats, there's the Cape style and there's the ranch style. And what we had talked about is whether, what constraints or limits are there on what the potential configuration can be for that? And Mr. Murphy, for your benefit, my involvement on this goes, not with this project, but my involvement with this parcel indirectly at least, has gone back to when we did the senior housing survey, where there were seniors, and we were looking for affordable housing, small A affordable, not 40B affordable, where seniors, I think this was the third favorite location for senior housing in town, so the way I've looked at the Hinkley South property all along has been almost as the first housing development opportunity that we've had. But the seniors at the time, and in the, prior to that, have all made very clear that they're interested in single-floor living, so when we get to two-story houses with multiple bedrooms, part of me is curious to see what the, what the true senior marketplace really, how it behaves. On the other hand, the other part of me wants to make sure that we don't wind up with 24 Cape-style, three-bedroom, two-story houses, you know, units there, when in fact, the main purpose for the affordable housing for seniors was the single floor. So my question, for anybody who has an answer, is, is there a limit on how many of those 24 units can become the Cape-style, three-bedroom units?
So when we proposed this to the AHT, we tried to do an estimate based on the two different styles. We believed we were going to do half the Cape style and half the ranch style. We also clarified to the AHT that on the Cape style, that it is capable of being designed with the second floor of the Cape style as unfinished space. And this, what all of that would do is you would, one of the rooms on the first floor of Cape style, which was otherwise designated as a den study, that could be, if a person wanted to, converted to an additional bedroom there. So really what we are, we really think that we have is three styles of housing, hopefully to address the demand, and as you indicated, there is going to be some response to market. The anticipation is that initially, we would build six units, perhaps even eight units at first, to give all of the styles available for some people to actually see and to see that it's a good progress. Ratio-wise, that means two out of those eight would be affordable, classical affordable, as opposed to small A affordable. And I think that's going to give us a really good sense of what it is. I think if you saw the design, and I think you did, you'll see that both the Cape and the ranch style both appear to have a second floor part, even though the ranch does not, it just has a facade that appears to be a second floor. So you can't determine from the outside when you're driving down, you know, whether or not something is one way or the other. But the primary use is going to be single, single-floor living, and we do have that additional option for the finishing of the second-floor space, but this gives us the opportunity to make sure that those persons who want a small A affordable market unit, they can choose not to finish a second floor of the Cape and still have that style if that's what they prefer, or prefer to the ranch style. So I think we tried to build in some flexibility to the space to be as responsive as we could at this stage of the development to express concern.
So the plan you had was 12, the projection was 12 and 12, is there anything in what you're proposing that would limit it to 12? And let me, let me be clear where I'm coming from. The, when we looked at senior housing needs, the small A affordable price range at the time, this was, this goes back, I think, three years when we looked at the survey, the small A affordable price range that we were targeting was more, like 400 to 550,000, which is a pretty high price for senior affordable housing in just about any, in most of the towns here in this state, but not here. The concern I have, and I'm doing this off the top of my head, I think the three, the three-bedroom Cape style was finished, with a finished upstairs, was closing in more on the $600,000 price point, which some seniors are happy with, and we had said, we don't need to worry about providing seniors that can afford $600,000 homes with $600,000 homes. So I'm sensitive to the fact that the land that we are devoting to this, if we were just sheer mercenary, we probably could have subdivided it in a different way and sold the land price to a single-unit houses in a, you know, in a way that would probably delivered more money to the town, but we had a town purpose for doing it. And the concern I have is that at the end, there are some more affluent seniors that come in, and suddenly we have 24 concentrated three-bedroom Cape-style homes that was in a, on a concentrated piece of property, that's really not serving the target that we're looking for. So I'm directing this at you, Mr. Murphy, but that's not maybe your problem exactly. So that's my concern, though, is that we lose that, we wind up not with what we intended, but with something that's, you know, there'll be some happy owners, but not really what we had intended to do with the land.
Well, everything can be two bedrooms. We have no problem whatsoever in having the property be restricted to be two bedrooms. We have no intention of making it three bedrooms. It was going to be, if in fact you have a finished second floor, then you're going to have a den or study down on the fourth floor. So you're going to have a master on the first floor of both styles, and then you're going to either have a den or a second bedroom on either the ranch or the lower-priced Cape, and then you have the potential of making the second floor on the Cape finished. So first, I just wanted to make it clear that there's no desire to market these as anything more than two bedrooms. We don't have any interest in doing it. The rest of it is, in fact, you know, we are stuck in the same place on market as everybody else, which is, you know, as you probably have read about, the lumber and other prices for construction of housing have skyrocketed. So we do have to go through an exercise of making sure that we budget things appropriately, and when we put together the DHCD application, we'll put in information that relates to that, that will be, I suspect, required by Mr. Sorrell to be an attachment to the purchase and sale agreement, that will also require the signature of the Board of Selectmen. So we'll each have slightly more information than we have at this second on what we think and project prices to be on the build-out, and, you know, we, you know, I think Mr. Barelli has been a very successful builder for not only himself, but also for the community that he still serves in Medfield. He has, he has really done a, he's won awards on affordable housing, and he was, I think, was the, actually, on DHCD, said they were on the cover of one of the projects that he did. So he really recognizes competing interest of the recipient to get affordable housing and for the developer to get a reasonable price.
None of my comments are intended in any way, shape, or form to be critical of Mr. Barelli. I appreciate what he's done in this town, so that's not, that's not where I'm coming from. Mike, the RFP that we issued, did it specify single-floor housing?
I'd have to look back.
I'd have to look back at whether it specified single floor. It definitely had, it had a number of bullet points in it. It had, you know, the no-step entry and it had all of that in there. I don't know if it, if it had, I don't know that it was, I don't know. I don't know that it said it. It certainly said that it had to be capable of single floor living. In other words, in other words, you had to be able to live on a single floor. I don't know if it said no second floor.
Okay. So here, so here my question around that is if we issued an R F P that called out single floor living, I believe the other two respondents issued proposals for single floor units. I'm sensitive if we did that, that's a big if right now. If we did that, we awarded to a proposal that was not exclusively single floor and potentially could be not single floor at all, that bothers, this is, again, no reflection on Mr. Barelli or you, Mr. Murphy, this has to do with how we went about soliciting this and awarding it. If it just simply said it had to be capable of single floor living, then my concern goes away on that.
I think it said that your different scoring was attributed to different factors of the development. And that was, among them was open floor plan, I believe, was one of them. Master bedroom on the first floor. So it was something that was to be considered by A H D in evaluating the competing property proposals and the various factors they had. They're probably not a hundred percent on for things that were a hundred percent preferred, but they weren't, it wasn't any exclusivity to only that design as the R F P.
Okay. Then let's, we'll figure that piece out. That's a town issue, just to make sure that we've dealt with this properly. I have one question for you. You've talked about the idea that there's almost three formats. There's the ranch style, there's Cape style with unfinished upstairs, and then there's the Cape style with the finished upstairs. None of them more than two bedrooms. If you have, for the not, I'm not talking about the affordable units. For the other seventy-five percent of the units, if you have an owner or a buyer comes in and wants Cape style, but wants the lower-priced unfinished upstairs, and another buyer that comes in wants the Cape style with a higher-priced finished upstairs, how do you, how will you determine which house you build?
Well, hopefully we're going to build both. And hopefully the only time that we'll have that choice is the very last year. But I think what we really want to do is we want to build out this project and sell this project within, you know, hopefully less than two years. That's what the hope is. I, you know, probably Mark will tell me that if I have buyers who make offers, I probably can't discriminate against one or the other, depending on which one they want. But if in fact he tells me I have some rights, then I'll follow his advice about that.
So maybe I'm not sure, I'm putting you on the spot now, Mark. See what I'm asking is that right now, if a house is for sale, we have bidding wars where houses sell for more than is asked.
Oh, no question, Mark.
So if a buyer comes in, and again, remember, I'm focused on the small A affordable for seniors who can't afford the high end of what seniors indicate they're willing to spend. So somebody comes in and says, well, I can't afford the high end, but I would like the unfinished basement and somebody, or the unfinished upstairs. Then somebody else comes in and says, well, but I want it all finished. What's to stop the higher bidding senior from getting that unit?
So, coming back to the present, what we're anticipating entering into is, and this isn't just semantics, is a land disposition agreement as opposed to a purchase and sales agreement. So basically, there are controls that the town is free to impose on the project. A P N S would just focus on at some point transferring a deed. Whereas a land disposition agreement is the town has an interest, not just in selling the property, getting a check, but that a certain specific project be built. You can make that as specific as you want to. It's a negotiation thing with the developer, give and take and what they'll accept and what you accept. You can spell it out in much more detail even than the draft that you were given as at the moment.
Okay.
And you can carry it through.
Okay.
Right, right, you know, to those scenarios you're talking about. The affordables, you know, are subject to certain state regulation in terms of how they're constructed and then how they're, how you find buyers, frankly.
Those I'm not worried about. It's this gray zone in the middle that's not qualified as forty B, but it's not somebody just out in the straight market. And at least in the survey we did a few years ago, there was an indication that there were people that were in that zone. Some of them, it's not that they have a lot of, it's not that they make a lot of money. It's that they sell a house in Medfield and therefore they don't qualify on the net worth because they basically captured the equity they had in the house they sold. And because they have that, they're not eligible for forty B, although in all other respects they would be. So that's, that's the target I'm looking for. Your comments are helpful, Mark, and they're helpful. And I understand the need to, for a developer to be able to make a profit. And the cost of construction is tough right now. So I'm not, my position here is not a blind one of, well, I don't care whether you make money or not. I actually do, but I also care about what I think is a group of seniors that are looking for a particular kind of housing. Mike, does this, now I'm putting you on the spot. I'm fine moving ahead with approving this LIP, given what Mark has just said, as long as you, you understand where I'm coming from. You understand the sensitivity.
I understand entirely where you're coming from. And my view of it is, there's only so much you can do with a twenty-four unit development. And so when we did the survey, the demand was many multiples of twenty-four. And we're not going to be able to satisfy, you know, every piece of the market with a twenty-four unit development.
Right.
And so I think if you, I look at this as sort of one piece of the puzzle and that it may well be that there are people in our target zone that don't end up in here for the very reason you say, or for other reasons, or because they prefer someplace other than where it is. And I think, given all the different pressures sort of working against the success of a project like this, I think, I wouldn't make the perfect enemy of the good. I don't think we can design a project that hits all of the things. I think it was a challenge just generally to develop an R F P that would even in a minimal sense hit that lower end of the market, right? Because the natural push for the forty B developers to want to maximize the size and maximize the value of the market units. And so we did try with the R F P to limit the, limit the value of the market units in part by size, right? Just sort of, there's only, people are going to pay only so much for a unit of this size regardless. I think that's probably the biggest factor against, you know, keeping that, that, some of those units in the zone, we're trying to get that four hundred to five fifty. We don't know where exactly it will all come out. And it'll be interesting to see. So I think I get entirely where you're coming from. I think given the amount of work that went into designing this proposal to hit this the way it did, I'm not sure we could twist the knobs even more to achieve that goal with the setup. That's my take on it. I think that's something.
And just to put this in context, what's on the agenda right now, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but they need, ultimately, they need this vote and support at some point. But they can't move forward without the purchase and sales agreement anyway because they need to show control to D H C D. And that's the sign P in the land disposition agreement. So we've got to come to terms on that.
And we're going to talk about some of those details in the executive session at the end of the, at the end of the meeting.
Well, I agree with that. I understand that, Mark. What it was is I'm a little gun shy after our exchange. We're okay on this, but when we were debating whether or not we had the ability to change the age limits and things like that, I don't want to find after we've approved a project at this level that suddenly I get told and there's no way legally to help manage the project at the moment.
To twenty nineteen, the town meeting at that time, and I believe that somebody, and I don't remember who, checked with D H C D at that time when the age was increased because of the concerns I raised, that in my experience, fifty-five was where they drew the line. And so somebody had checked that out before we went to town meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust or whatever. Because people were comfortable going into that meeting that that was a doable thing.
Let me put you on the spot again.
So I mean, I think to this point, because it sounds like, I mean, based on what Mr. Murphy is saying, that they would be agreeable incorporating into the L D A and the LIP agreement that it'd be limited to two bedrooms. And I don't know if you'd be comfortable, Mr. Murphy, limiting it to a twelve, a maximum of twelve of the larger, right? I mean, it sounds like your original concept is twelve and twelve. And I don't know, you know, I think that might go some distance to.
So for now, I don't think we need to put you on the spot to negotiate in a public meeting on issues you probably didn't know you were going to get hit with. I'm comfortable, in light of what Mark has said about the potential for us to negotiate conditions that will address. And I'm not, you know, I'm trying to address that middle zone. I'm not insisting that everything that's not forty B be that middle zone. So I'm not, I'm not precluding that third, you know, the high-end option. I'm, what I'm trying to do is make sure that we don't just wind up saying, yeah, boy, that's a really tough zone. People that don't have a lot of money, but sold their house, so they have something in the bank. This is just not the place for you because we can't figure out how to make that work. If I know that we have the potential to get to something that addresses, if you, and I'm putting you on the spot in the sense that if you think that we can get to that kind of, you know, a potential, it's still going to be agreed to by the developer, I'm not asking you to do that, that there is a way for us to structure that, that would address that lower end of the small A affordable market. To some degree, I'm curious to see what the market demand is. I know, I know what the survey said, but until people actually have to put money on the table, then who knows what's real? But if we do this and at the end, we find out nothing about that segment of the market, then as far as I'm concerned, this was a wasted project from the standpoint of achieving the town's senior housing goals for the part of the population we had said we wanted to help. So I'm not looking for guarantees, I've just.
Yeah, I'm open to that. And maybe that's a discussion that we have to have with, with the developer and with Mr. Murphy after our discussion in the executive session tonight. So I'm open to that. I'm just saying that, I'm just not sure within the strictures that are applied within the forty B umbrella, within the LIP umbrella, I'm not sure there's that many more knobs we can twist to get at what you're achieving. In other words, to try to make sure to kind of tamp down through, really through the design of the building, tamp down the costs. So it's sort of, we're essentially limiting the market. And that's what we try to do at the outset, is sort of limiting the market rate by limiting the size of the units and the amenities of the units and all the rest of it. And the fact that it's not a half an acre of land. And so we're trying to build market rate units that people aren't going to pay more than five hundred fifty thousand dollars for. And that's essentially what we're trying to achieve. And I think within, I mean, to me, I think there's just a limit to how far you can go with that within this structure. I think to really achieve what we wanted to achieve, it would require a change to just buy right zoning. In other words, require a change to our very restrictive zoning code to make it less restrictive, to make it possible to build smaller houses that don't have to, don't have, don't carry with them the approvals and bureaucracy associated with forty B, but are going to create market rate units at a lower end of the market, right? So that's, I think that's really how to address the piece you're talking about, where you would have, where you could build a development like this without any of them being, you know, affordable.
That was originally what I thought we were going to do here, to be honest with you.
Small enough, where they were small enough, but you, to do that, you'd have to change the zoning code.
That's what the town voted down, failed to pass.
Right. So that's what I think you have to do. I mean, if you really wanted to have, you know, small A affordable, not as qualified by the state, but it's really to remove some of the artificial constraints on the market, right? So the zoning code functions as an artificial constraint on the market. And so you remove some of those constraints to allow, because I agree with you. There is a demand for the kind of housing you're talking about. And there's a need for the kind of housing you're talking about. And we by law don't allow that kind of housing to be built in Medfield in a way that's economical outside of the forty B. And that is true of most suburbs in Massachusetts. And so if you were to look at, and if you, if you were to look at that particular piece of the market, that's the piece of the market, including many other pieces of the market who are not served by the way we do zoning here in the suburbs of the Northeast United States.
I have a lawyer to the right of me who told me that we could negotiate things with the developer to address the issues I'm raising. And a lawyer to the left of me who sounds like you're telling me we can't.
No, I think we can. I am just trying to temper the expectations for how precisely we can hit the target. I think we absolutely can negotiate things here. It sounds like Mr. Murphy and Mr. Barelli are open to it. And I think we should to move it closer to the target. I just don't think we're, you know, I don't think we're going to hit a bullseye on it. I think we have to settle for something a little bit outside.
I'm happy playing horseshoes here. That's fine.
Probably the leveling off effect is once you've got that artificially low affordability that forty B imposes on the prices, that's that many units that you've got to make up somewhere that forces it the other way.
No, I understand that.
So I'm happy to have a discussion on how to tweak it, to move it in that direction. I'm just saying that I think we're not going to be able to hit it that much closer to the mark than, that much closer to the mark than we are here. Because I think we've already moved it a little, I think if you left the market completely to its druthers, they'd like to have houses that they're selling for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. And then an affordable unit as opposed to sort of capping off the markets. And so I think we've already tweaked it and I think we can tweak it further. And I'm fine with that. I'm just saying, I just want to level set expectations that we're not going to be able to hit it. And I don't want to have you coming back in a year and saying, my goodness, these have all sold for this high price and we failed. And I'm just saying that there's a limit to what we can achieve, I think, in that area. But I'm happy to try to move it a little bit closer to.
So, Mr. Murphy, and I think Mr. Barelli, you've heard where I'm coming from in the issue. It's not a reflection on either of you. It's a reflection on my concerns about the town's needs. If two years from now, what we've found is that we basically have sold all of the non-affordable units to the high-end senior buyers who wanted the completely finished housing. Because even, you know, I'll go with you, Mike. We can tweak it. I want to see how far we can tweak it. And I get the issue about if you're going to have the affordable housing, then suddenly you can't do lots of things. So I'm guessing that whatever we might do here is going to be largely dependent upon the cooperation of the developer to put something together that makes economic sense, but also gets at this issue that I'm talking about. If two years from now, I'm looking, or we're talking about eighteen units that have all gone in the high-end, the highest-end format, I will consider what we've done here to be a failure for what we were trying to accomplish. But we'll have six more affordable units. I'm really frustrated. I don't, I don't see how we're going to move ahead on some of the senior housing because there aren't that many opportunities to do it. And the senior housing I'm talking about is the small A affordable. It's not.
But if we did this outside of, if we did this outside of the forty B, we'd probably be able to build a total of four or five houses on this lot. I don't think we'd be able to build the kind of development you want to on this lot.
I'm not sure that that's true.
That's why, that's why I'm saying that the way the zoning code is structured does not, is the reason why there aren't any developments like this in our town.
No, I guess I do understand what you're saying.
There's other areas of town that have actually rezoned that you could do it, but they're not areas where the town owns land and therefore can't take the benefit.
The original picture I had of that lot was it was going to look more like Turtle Brook than a higher-end development. My picture I have now is it's going to look more like a higher-end development.
Turtle Brook is a forty B.
I thought it was under a different program. Well, I'm not really talking about the legal, I'm talking about the format of the housing. I was picturing that more.
I mean, there are, to your point, I mean, there's some things that work in your favor by having it be a forty B. First of all, there's frankly a snob factor, that there's certain people that would not buy a market rate unit knowing that there are affordables in there. That's number one. Number two, the other thing is, presumably it's condominium. So you've got owners, you've got common charges. And the affordables get a favorable fee there. So the other units have to pick it up. And that doesn't sit well necessarily with all people either. So there's certain cooling factors, if you will.
And the yards are not that large, right? I mean, it's not, this is, they aren't going to be, it's not a lavish property. So I mean, I'm always, I am always continually surprised at what people will pay for houses that I look at and say, I would never pay that amount for that house. But, and for that, I'm grateful having just refinanced my mortgage. It's great. I'm glad people are doing it. So maybe I'll be surprised here as well. So then, so that's your concern. My concern is a little more specific. And this comes out of, and we've talked about this at the previous Affordable Housing Trust meetings. And I think I would like incorporate it in the agreement. I don't know, I'm looking up there. You can't see me from up there, but Mr.- but, Mr. Murphy, in, with respect to the buffer, I would like the agreement to include that the buffer between the property lines won't be anything less than what was in the most recent plan that we saw, and that as, and I know that a lot of these things change, they change over time, and there's different adjustments that can be made, but I would like to have in there that you'll make an effort to increase it where feasible in light of the wetland delineation and the rest of it, past, you know, beyond the buffer that currently exists. And the second piece is with respect to the, the type of vegetation and the barrier between this development and the neighbors, that for the, the two houses that abut the property directly, that, you know, you will pick the kind of barrier and the kind of trees that the people in those houses want to have between them. And I think we can work on the language for that, but I think from a town perspective, you know, I defer to their judgment as to the kind of barrier they'd like to have as between the development, and have that specifically in the agreement. So, those are two points from my end. I, I think that, that should be okay, that's what's in your plan already, but I think just to make that clear, in the agreement to maintain the existing buffer as shown on the plan, and then to have the, the vegetation and the barrier meet with the approval of the neighbors. And I don't know that you necessarily have to put a species of tree directly in the agreement now, but that, that their views will be not just taken into account, but essentially, assuming it's a tree that will survive and live in the community, and it's not a billion-dollar tree that you have to purchase and transplant from somewhere, that they'll get the kind of tree that they want between their properties. And I suspect they'll be reasonable about that as well. So, those are the two points, the two points that I had, that I would like incorporated in, into the Lip Agreement. So, it sounds like we have some more work to do on, and I don't see anybody in the Q, oh, I have one question in the Q and A, Sarah copied in the goals from the RFP. One question from Kristen Sykes, and this is a question, I think I can answer this, but I'll let Mr. Murphy answer it. Kristen Sykes says she works for the Appalachian Mountain Club and oversees the Bay Circuit Trail in Greenway, and would like you to speak to the impact of the project on the trail.
We don't have an agreement with them at the moment.
We, we currently don't have an agreement for the Bay Circuit Trail to pass over our town property, and we've been waiting to do that since we had the issue where they cut down the trees in this neighborhood.
Right, right.
Right, even before that, but after that issue happened, they promised me they would come in and meet with the Board of Selectmen to discuss how we would move forward, and they have yet to do that.
Okay.
I think we're in our second year of waiting.
Okay, so I think at this point, then, the answer to that is, it'll be rerouted one way if we can reach an agreement. I think that's the answer. I think that's what, that's, so, we're answering the question for you, Mr. Murphy, but I think that's the basic idea, it'll be rerouted if, if we can reach an agreement on the route for that. All right, and I don't see anything else in the Q and A. Oh, Mr. Peterson. Microphone, please. And then, you need a microphone, and tell us who you are and where you live.
Osler Peterson, I apologize for sitting so close, I'm moving back now. I live at 10 Copperwood Road, which is the abutter to an abutter to the Hinckley South property, and I, and I basically have a couple comments and, and an ask. The first comment is that I, I served on the ZBA before I became a, a, a member of the Select Board. I'm speaking entirely as, as a neighbor, as a resident of the town tonight, but when, and I was actually, I learned about 40B because I, I, I wrote the decision on the Turtle Brook development off of Dale Street in town, and as, what I would say about that was that as a member of the ZBA, getting a Lip from the Board of Selectmen made me understand that the town wanted that project, and so that I tried to, as a ZBA member, do what the town wanted, and we didn't change the project much. I had, I, I made Mr. McCready put in basements in the affordable units, because I thought that was only fair and not that expensive, and, but basically, we, we did what the town wanted. And so, that, that leads into my second point, which is addressing what Mr. Markucci has been bringing up, which is the buffer, which is the, the major issue that the neighbors seem to have on this, and because we're basically all, as neighbors, we have, I've heard everybody say that they are accepting of the project, even though the density is four or five times higher than the, the underlying zoning that, that was there on the Hinckley South when we bought our properties. The zoning is the expectation of what might go in next door. This is a, a density that is four to five times the, the density of the zoning. We're accepting of that if there is a, what we regard as a sufficient buffer. And getting to the issue as to what is sufficient, we have coalesced around the, the figure of 150 feet from the property line to the nearest building. I think that the current plan has, is has it at about 85 feet. This project would get the neighbors' support if it was 150 feet. We, I, I arrived at the 150 because that's the buffer between our neighborhood and any development on the industrial land that abuts the Sears property, which also abuts, the Sears also abut the Hinckley South. 150 feet is the distance between my house and the Firmino's house next door to me. So, I, I don't know how to make this personal to you, Mr. Markucci, but from you, you, Mr. Murphy, I would say that this was the equivalent of someone putting a, a four to five houses per acre on the other side of your backyard, or on, on the other side of the town right of way between you and the Amnot property. It is very close, it is a very different result for the neighbors that live in that location, and a very different expectation from the, the one house on 40,000 square-foot lots that, that the town zoning gave us to expect that we would, would, we would have. We're accepting of that if we can get that 150-foot buffer zone, and I'm sure we can work out the plantings. It's the distance at the moment that, that is holding, I think, our neighborhood up from agreeing to this proposal. Our, our homes are our, our castles and our, our security, and, and we really, we get, we feel challenged when someone changes the, the environment around us. We're willing to accept that change if, if there can be this little separation between our existing community at the 40,000 square foot lot and, and the new neighborhood that's four to five times that density. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I've, I've heard the 150-foot pitch a number of times, so I'm familiar with the request, and, so you, you react to it, my reaction to it is, I understand why you want it, I understand why that would be in the, what you'd most prefer. You know, we have approved Lip projects with much less than an 85-foot buffer. I think the people who live next door to Medfield Meadows would love an 85-foot buffer, and they think that would be great compared to what they had before, and they have accepted that distance, and we approved that Lip project. I think we just have a philosophical difference in the sense that I don't view the zoning on property I don't own as any kind of a promise to me about what the zoning is going to remain on that. You know, the zoning is, is designed to achieve the objectives that it is, it's not a personal property right of the abutters or the neighbors to insist that things remain forever and henceforth how they are. And I live in a, as Medfield goes, a denser neighborhood than, than over on the hospital, so I, I'm much closer than that to my, you know, next-door neighbor, but I, I think 85 is, and it's more than 85 building to building, so 85 to the property line, I think, is a reasonable number when, which hopefully can be increased, because obviously there's a wetland there that's got to be delineated, and, and so I think that, that, you know, whatever impact the density will have on the other side of, of the fence and the other side of the vegetation would be mitigated by that particular distance. And I do think that to achieve the 150 feet, based on my review of everything, we probably have to eliminate some of the buildings in the development, which to me, you know, you're, we're trying to balance, then the, the goals that we have of, of senior housing, we're trying to balance the goals that we have for affordable housing, we're trying to balance due concern and respect for the wishes of the neighborhood, and we also are dealing with a town asset that the town paid for. And so, as I've thought about it, and I've tried to, you know, model in my head, how could we get to the 150 feet, because I'd rather be able to say yes to you, Pete, than say no to you, and say yes to the abutters, to the Firmino's and the Sears, than say, say no to them on the 150 feet. I mean, I don't know, I, I don't necessarily agree that the distance between your house and your neighbor is the distance between that and something else is necessarily the rubric we ought to use, but ultimately, if we were to say, "Look, we, we need to insist on the 150 feet," it likely leads to fewer buildings. I think you're essentially then transferring some of the economic value of this property that is held by the whole town just to the immediate abutters. And I think we've done our best to try to move this project closer down to the Council on Aging. We've tried, done our best to try to adjust it through the changes that have been made at this year's town meeting from the original proposal, and that's why I'm saying that, that, well, if we put in the agreement the minimum buffer and then identify, to your point, Pete, that one of the objectives of the town and the Selectmen is to increase that where possible, and so where you have a trade-off between the buffer and something else that's reasonable, we would like the ZBA and, and the developer, in the course of the engineering specifics, to come down on the side of, of increasing the buffer. I think that, to me, is why that would be included in the agreement, to say that as, if, if you can increase the buffer by 20 feet or do something else, if you're trying to balance those two, we'd rather you increase the buffer. So, I, I think that's kind of how, where I come down. For me, I would not insist on 150 feet, I just think where it stands, I think that would be too much of a change. But that, that's where, I have thought about this a lot, and I've, I've tried to get to the point where I could say, "Yep," because that's obviously, 150 feet has been out there for several months as a, as an ask, and I'd like to be able to get there, but I haven't been able, in my head, say, "You know, this is what we're going to do." I think that, that would be a step too far to insist on this in this situation, but that, that's my take on it, but Gus, you're...
Mike's covered a lot of the, I think, the hard, the hard logic, and I think you made a lot of sense on all that. My, speaking to you not as a Selectman, but as, as a resident, regardless of where you came from, I, I hear the sentiment, and to your point about what it would be like for me, I can tell you it already is like that for me because of Chapel Hill Landing. It's, so I understand, but I also understand the town needs to do some things, and, and so there's that. I'm sensitive to the fact that we've already at least tried to respond to the, the residents there by modifying the land, and that actually wound up with a modification of the project. And the whole reason we did that was to try to at least partially address what the issues were that you raised, so, to the extent, I think, I think what I heard, and then you, what you said, Mike, is to the extent that the buffer can be increased in a way that works for the project, we will be certainly supportive of wanting to increase the buffer. I agree with Mike, I wouldn't be willing to torpedo the project unless we can get to 150-foot buffer or significantly damage the project, particularly in light of what we've already done to try to move in that direction. Maybe this doesn't matter, maybe it does matter, but aside from the, the horizontal space buffer, I think we're also talking about screening. So, the issue of physically, you know, physical proximity is one thing, visual proximity is another thing, and I think the, the hope here is that we would be able to do something that would minimize the visual impact on your neighborhood of having all those units over there. So, that, that's another piece of this that I think at least ought to weigh in the balance on, on the responsiveness. If there's a way to do it, the better response to the neighbors that live there, I'm all for it. If what the neighbors would like to see is something that actually jeopardizes or damages the project as it has now been reconfigured, I just think that's asking for us to do too much.
Christine, can you, for most, Joe Seer, who's raised his hand?
Come off mute, does he know?
Can you hear me now?
Oh, there is. We can hear you. Hi, Joe.
Hi, guys, how you doing? I, I appreciate you taking the Q and A on this, and, I mean, obviously, I, I, I do share the same sentiment as Pete in terms of the buffer, but I do understand the, the issues of the town. I guess, the, the one question I had in terms of the, you know, potentially maybe increasing the buffer is, I think I raised this last time, is the distance between the units. You know, it seems, you know, you mentioned Turtle Brook, and, you know, that, that distance is probably closer to, you know, five to nine feet between units, and I think that the distance between units is, is, you know, approaching like 25 in, in this development. So, I, I guess to, I guess my question is, at what point can we raise that question to see if they can shrink that distance between units, so hopefully gain that, you know, whatever, maybe 10, 20 feet, you know, additional space for buffer, right? So, is that something that we raise here, or is that something we raise with the ZBA? You said that you mentioned that it could possibly, you know, a trade-off in, in favor of the buffer would be favorable. So, I, I guess I'm trying to ask for clarification where to raise that question, is that...
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, you're obviously welcome to raise it here. I think you've heard Gus and Mike's views on it, so it might not be, I don't know that you'll get, necessarily get the, the answer right here you're looking for. I mean, my view of it is, I mean, with all of the, and Mark, you can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, generally speaking, when we've done these projects, is we, we approve the Lip, it goes through the DHCD process, it sort of comes back to go to the ZBA, and then in the ZBA process, it gets to the harder engineering, the wetland delineation. I know the Medfield Meadows proj, project, the, the layout of the buildings did change during, during the course of that. So, my view of it would be, and I think Mr. Murphy alluded to this earlier, that before they do additional design and engineering work on the development, they want to make sure they're going to have support from the town for the Lip project, and so I think it would be something, because it, I think then you're getting into kind of those engineering details connected to the, the wetlands delineation and the rest, and that would be the phase to continue to raise it, and as I said, this, this would be already embodied in the agreement with the developer as, as a, as a goal, or something to be worked toward in that process. But am I wrong about that, Mark? You can tell me if I'm wrong about that. I mean, they'll get notice of the ZBA hearing, they'll be able to participate in the ZBA hearing, and that's...
That's on the table, you can, as a give and take, as part of the presentation, negotiation, what have you, it absolutely can be moved around, redesigned, what have you, but obviously, at some point, the developer has to agree to it.
No, I, I understand, but I'm saying, he, he's asking where in the process do they get to make this additional case for it. I think they've made the case...
Well, assume they'll make it upfront, because if, if the developer knows going in, that that's...
Right, but I mean, I think, Mark, at this point, we're three months into, they've already made this case to the Affordable Housing Trust, they've made the case to us. I think the question, I think the, I think the answer is the next step, Joe, is in the ZBA process, and there'll be additional design work done, additional engineering work done by the developer in the ZBA process, and if there's going to be some sort of a reconfiguration of it, I think that's the next step, because I think what they're looking for from us is, is support for the Lip application. That will then go to DHCD. If DHCD then approves it, it comes back to the town to go to the ZBA, and I think that's the point at which they would do the additional engineering work to kind of move it into the final design phase. I, I think, I think that's correct.
I, I think that's right.
Yeah.
I, I guess, maybe I'm confused, because when I thought, I heard Mark say, you know, with the land disposition agreement, that you could write, you know, write that into the, the, I guess, the Lip Agreement, and, and I didn't know if, you know, spacing between, you know, units could be something that you could specify not to be greater than, you know, nine feet, or something like that. Granted, I, I know that there's, you know, I don't know, the wetlands always seem like they're behind the unit, so I don't know how that would affect the distance between units, but...
Matt, I, I think what we said, we'd be willing to write into the agreement, is the 85 feet and the desire to increase it if possible, and there might be different, I mean, one way to increase it may be your suggestion of decreasing the space between the units, there might be other ways to get there, too. I don't know how specific we want to be in dictating exactly how you get there. My own view is, if we identify that as a goal in the process, to leave the details to the process, to the, to the towns, to the, to the ZBA, to the developer, to the towns' engineers, and to the comments from, the continued comments from the abutters.
Okay, so I guess what, yeah, I guess I'm trying to understand that, the if-possible part, right? So, you know, I, obviously, I'm trying to understand if nine feet is possible, or is that not possible, but is that, I guess that's a ZBA discussion.
Well, I think, Joe, I think also they won't be able to determine the nine feet until they do the next step of engineering and, and wetlands delineation. I know Jim and I have spoken at length through Sarah over the last two days regarding this, and he understands it's a, it's a key goal of the project, that the 85 is the minimum, and that we're looking to have that increase. So, I, I think we've made that clear to him, and we will include that in the agreement as well.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah.
Mr. Peterson.
One of the things that might be very helpful to the neighbors is if they can continue their meetings going forward with Mr. Borelli and Mr. Murphy, and they were very kind to meet with us at the Council on Aging Building, and they brought along the man from GLM, who I believe is their engineer, and we, we seemed to make a lot of progress in terms of getting to some sort of understanding... to some sort of understanding at that meeting. And it might be helpful for us as a neighborhood to meet with them again before it gets to this land disposition agreement stage, to try to get to see what is... I guess, Jim, if you can convince the neighbors that 150 feet isn't possible, then maybe you can sway us to support you at the ZBA. So that might behoove you guys to meet with us some more at this point, to see if we can work out some things. I know that we learned from the man from GLM that he was aware that the distance between the houses at Ralph Costello's development, Old Village Square, are 12 feet apart, which I guess was less than the plan that we saw that day. So I think there might be some ways of trying to look at it, or to help the neighbors understand that it's impossible.
Okay. All right. Anything else on this? Now, I think we'll have to, we'll have to meet again to approve the final agreements. Are we looking to send this, our next meeting is on August 3rd. Are they looking for the letter of support before August 3rd?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Jim, you need to wait to have the finalized LDA and purchase and sale before you can submit to DHCD, which we would not be able to release until the 3rd.
Yes. So one of the, I know it cannot be released until the 3rd, but we would like it to be an exhibit to the LDA or purchase and sale agreement, whatever Mark is posing as what, because the application to DHCD will also be an exhibit to the LDA or the purchase and sale agreement. And at least the letter of support, in my opinion, is fairly stock, and the details of other can likely be handled by Mark. What we don't want to do is, these are, every month that goes by is another month that, you know, worries us about whether or not we'll be able to go forward as soon as possible with the project, because we get then stuck into winter months, and there's a lot that should probably not.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, it's up to Gus as well. I mean, we could meet again for this before the 3rd if we need to, if we reach agreement. I mean, I think we don't have a final agreement to approve right now, and so if it's all, if you need the PNS to be approved before you can apply, then we need to get that done. We have an executive session tonight to talk about that amongst ourselves. We could schedule a special meeting between now and the 3rd to approve if we reach a final agreement. I'm just looking to get, you're not going to be able to get the PNS signed tonight. If you need the PNS signed tonight, we can certainly vote in favor of recommending the project and in favor of a letter of support, subject to working out the details of the LDA and the LIP agreement.
I would, I appreciate the time of the essence, but I would strongly advise, given the fairly substantial issues that are floating around, and they haven't even, the developer hasn't even seen a draft of the purchase and sale, other than what was attached to the RFP. But to make a commitment to support it without having worked out those details, I think is problematic.
All right. Well, let's do this then.
It's a formality that can be done after the fact.
All right. Let's do this then. Let's then, we'll defer the vote on this, we'll get the agreements worked out, and we can schedule a meeting before the 3rd just on this issue, because it's just Gus and I as well, and do that before the 3rd. Does that work?
Yeah. Just in light of the fact that how much of this discussion I drove, from the standpoint of just a pure letter of support, I'm fine, I'm okay, I understand where we're going. I have apprehensions about where we come out, but nonetheless, I understand the argument of moving ahead, and I even understand, I think, at least some of the arguments around the legal limits to what we can do, but hope we can do something there. Like you, Mike, I would not be inclined to hold the agreement hostage to some, something other than what we've discussed around the, you know, the spacing. There may be wording around what we would like or what we, you know, what we hope can happen. I'm happy for any of that kind of stuff in the final wording of the agreement, so I'm happy to hold off. But maybe for Mr. Borelli's and Mr. Murphy's benefit, where I am at now relative to what I was talking about, certainly my concerns are around the LIP, whether we really were ready to support it. I'm there. It's a question of getting the details figured out on the agreement.
I think, at the very least, whatever you agree the project should look like and how it should be incorporated in the agreement, that has to be submitted to them, and they have to say yes.
No, I got it. But I just think from a process standpoint, we will work on these agreements, and we'll have a meeting before August 3rd to get it, with them finalized and done. All right? That's where we are. So good. Mr. Murphy, Mr. Borelli, thank you very much. More work to do, but we'll get that done expeditiously. All right. Pete? All right. The next item is to vote to adopt the board committee appointment policy. Pete, any comments on the...
I don't think I had any on this. I thought we were going to have the absolute protocol laid out, so I'm pleased that we're doing that sort of thing.
Okay. Gus?
I had some, mostly their comments. Let me hit them. One, the first item under new appointments, I paid attention to where we use shell and where we use may, so it sounds like we're committing to publicly posting vacancies for at least two weeks, so we're not going to work, we're not going to act faster on appointments than two weeks. All of the subsequent paragraphs talk about what the town administrator or the Board of Selectmen may do, which tells me our policy gives us a lot of discretion if we have some reason we don't want to follow it. On item seven, I just had a question on the wording in that last clause. It says, unless a special designation is granted by the Board of Selectmen. It seemed like it should read, unless a special exemption, rather than designation. That just made more sense to me. And also, at the end of the first paragraph, a decision regarding the appointment will generally be made by the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen after the required two-week notice period has ended. That just wasn't clear to me, what we were doing there. Under item 10, existing committees may suggest new members for their committees. The only question I had on that is, how does that work in the case of associate members of committees or boards where somebody on the board steps down, and I would assume we would just automatically move an associate member up?
You have. Sometimes the associate members don't want to be full-time members.
Right.
So we were leaving it a little more open on that.
But sometimes they do, so does that mean that we do, but we still are going to have to post the vacancy so other people can ask to be, seems bureaucratic to me, but it would make more sense to me to say, you know, in the case of an associate member, that they have the opportunity to be promoted unless or added to the board unless they don't want to, or the Board of Selectmen chooses to advertise it. And then, the only question I had beyond that was, should we maintain a standing interest list? And I'll tell you where I'm coming from on this. Years ago, like 20, well, 15 or 18 years ago, on the backside of the warrant article, the warrant report, there was this thing that you could fill out and send in. And I was at a point in town where I'd been here long enough, I decided I'd express interest. So I sent it in. I happen to know, Jimmy, I'm not, was at the selectmen's meeting.
The rest is his.
Well, no, no, that's my point. No, it wasn't. It was, it was at least six to eight years before I ever joined the warrant committee. What happened, the very first selectmen's meeting, they, somebody showed them the filled-out form. They said, boy, this guy sounds interesting. And they, because Jim told me, he said, yeah, I was at the meeting, and they were commenting on your credentials and all this stuff. And then there was silence for eight years, which could have been deliberate. Pete was there. Pete's the only one who knows.
The file just got misplaced on Mike's desk.
Right. Well, and so my point, my only point is that right now, I think the only way that someone who just wants to serve the town can signal it, I think we still maybe do that, or we did when we had the small-size reports.
We did weigh in the small-size report, and then we went away with it because nobody was sending it in.
Yeah. Well, they probably all talked to me, and I said, what's the point? But...
I sent that in a couple of times and got no response whatsoever. So, yeah.
So my point would be, we don't need to do it with this, you know, eight-point font on the backside of a warrant report. We actually could just say, there's a standing, you know, on the town website, do you want to, are you interested in serving the town? You know, go to this site, put in your name. If you have specific interests, tell us. If you just want to help, let us know you just want to help. And then we just have that standing list.
So as part of one of the goals, not to give you a preview of what we're working on, but that is one of the things we are doing, so that when you go to the committee, board and committee website, you would have...
Okay. So there's no need to add that to the policy. I'm going to go with approving this policy.
Well, one of my favorite things was when I moved to town, I mailed in my resume. It was before the days of email. And I got a letter back that said, we have a form for this. Please use the form.
That's because we...
Which I didn't send in.
That's because we hate precocious lawyers who think they just can drop their resume.
We have a form for this that we send out once a year, so wait for this form.
At least you didn't get the don't call us, we'll call you letter.
Right. All right. Any comment, public comment? Anybody? You want to talk about this one, Chris? All right.
Chris Potts, Seven Curve Street. I just would ask that on the committee policy, which I thought was excellent, and to Gus's point in terms of, you know, giving flexibility on the appointments and with the exemptions, I think the one that may need, you may want to consider adding some criteria is when you would make an exemption for a non-resident. In what circumstances would that exemption apply? It might just be helpful to guide decisions going forward. That would be my only suggestion.
How would we define, I guess it would be around if that person provides a particular unique, I'm just trying to think, I would do that. If a particular person provides a unique, this is an exemption to allow them to vote, as opposed to simply serve.
Voting number. Sorry.
Yeah.
Like, for example, I'm on a significant number of committees as a voting member and do not live in town, so you'd have to make an exception when you're appointed.
Right. So what I'm looking for is, to Chris's point, what would we, how would we define that criteria, other than in the most vague and subjective of ways that the selectmen think of exemption as warranted? Have to think about it. I'm not sure exactly how to do it. I understand what you're saying, but I'm not sure how to pre-specify the criteria. That's all.
Because as you get more specific, because then you have two categories. You have town employees who are kind of in a gray zone, right? And then you have sort of complete non-residents who are just interested, right?
Town who are here and then moved out.
Right. Here or moved out, or who have just, for whatever reason. Because the other, because I think in that second category, I think, other than people who moved out, I think you'd also have a reason where you have people who are business owners in town. If they don't live in town, but they own a business and have, I think that would be this kind of the second category, where you'd probably, and I don't know if you'd be regularly, I mean, we've kind of gone back and forth on doing this and have not had a particular strict policy on it. I mean, those are kind of the two categories, right? Town employees and business owners, I think, would be the vast majority of the people in this category. So if we were going to be more specific, I'd want to think about how we would define that. Right. It'd have to be in reference to, you know, both the specifics of the project, whether the committee is governed by other regulations, other rules, if it's got some other, you know, like with the MSBA situation, where they have their own set of criteria for what they want to have on committees, or a situation where you have, like, the safety committee, the police chief should probably be on the safety committee. So...
Well, the criteria there, the issue here is really voting member as opposed to member.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. That's a, that's a...
Right. And I think if you were going to be more specific, then I think we'd probably want to put some additional piece on it, that we would put a hard cap on the percentage of voting members who could be non-residents. I could see if you were going to make an exception, you wouldn't want it to be more than 20% or 15% or some, you know, some number like that. So, I mean, I'm fine either way. I mean, I think that if it's identified in the policy as an exception, that we'd have to give an explanation for why we were making the exception. And then over time, probably there'd be a development of some, at least guidance as to when those exceptions would be made. I just don't know if we can conceive of every possible circumstance, or if we'd end up, turn it into like a six-paragraph section.
Right.
The important thing is to have a voice in the committee, not necessarily a vote. I don't think that many of our decisions are decided by a slim majority vote on any of our committees in any event, so I think having people there, like on the ALS committee, you said there was somebody who wasn't a...
Yeah. I mean, there's a whole different issue of not allowing out-of-towners to serve on committees. I think that, we shouldn't prohibit that at all. But the issue of voting, I mean, the normal standard is people who don't pay the taxes shouldn't get to vote on anything that would incur taxes. Then the question is, well, what about other committees where decisions, you know, what I'm thinking in my head is, what if we had a search, you know, we did a nationwide search for a senior position in town, and one of the best people we could put on the committee doesn't live in town, but there's only three people on the committee, you might want that person to be a voting member because they're voting on a recommendation, they're not voting on the salary or anything like that. So it just, it's all the different ways an exemption could occur. I'm trying to say, okay, how do you capture that?
To Mike's earlier point.
When we did the police chief search, when you had a number of department heads on that committee.
Yeah.
To Mike's earlier point, a business owner's paying taxes.
And that would be, and under certain circumst, well, then, there would be times that maybe the issue deliberately or want the business owner to be voting because it's got something to do directly with business that, you know, they'd be the best ones to have. But it's just, it's not that I disagree, it's just I'm not sure how we define that in a way that is going to work.
And then there's a distinction between committees that have, you know, most of our committees have purely advisory function.
Right. Right.
They don't actually have any authority to do anything, the authority that directs them on town meeting or this board or some other board. And then you have some that obviously do it. The ZBA has actual authority, the Conservation Commission has actual authority, the planning board, that's got a different position. So you have to be in town. Those positions, I think, that's where you have, you play sort of an adjudicative role. And that, they're in sort of a different category than advisory ones, because ultimately it's an advisory to the body that's actually making the decision, right? We can think about it. I mean, I, you know, I think we...
Maybe the differentiation is those committees or boards that have legal authority, those purely advisory committees, and those committees that may be advisory but also have advisory influence over issues of financial ramification. Just have those three groupings. I guess it'd be very easy for the pure advisory committee to sit there and say, if the selectmen determine that it's in the best interest of the town to allow someone on a committee like that to have a vote, then we grant the exemption. My guess is, for the ones with legal authority, if they are not appointed as a function of a legal appointment, then they don't get to vote. But I don't think we would get to decide anyway.
Also to Pete's point, I think Pete's point is well-taken, right, that, you know, if you're an advisory committee and you have a contested one-level vote, well, you know, your advice is going to be as good as the vote by one, as opposed to, you know, greater consensus. So I don't know how much of a difference that makes anyway. I mean, I think it's, I mean, it's, I like the clarity of the simplicity of how it's written here, in that it sort of has a default, and then there's a special exception, and, you know, there'd have to be a particular reason for it, and providing a little greater guidance. And then I think, do think the more detail you get, you're spending a lot of time on a policy that may apply only rarely, as opposed to sort of leaving it here to say, here's why you'd make a special exception, here's why you're making it. I don't know. I guess I would be okay with how it is, and then kind of see what happens, but at least it's in, written down, this is what we're doing, and this is how it works. I don't know. I mean, I would be fine with adding something saying, for those boards that exercise, I don't know how we define it, they obviously have to be residents, and they might have to be anyway, but...
What I would suggest is, if the policy is okay with the three of us, we adopt the policy. If we get to, if we understand what the pressing need is to prescribe the criteria for the exemption, we can always modify that, you know, if there's something, we can always modify the policy. I'm just having a hard time. It's a practical matter, and I wouldn't delay the policy while my slow gears grind through and try to figure something out. But if something makes sense, I wouldn't have any problem with adapting, with modifying the policy to do it either.
Right. Right. Okay. Well, we'll be confronted with applying it immediately, because we have several capital budget committee members who are not residents of the town, right? And so... And so I think that's fine. So.
Right.
You want to make a motion, Gus?
I move that we, let's see, I gotta get, I gotta get the, I gotta get the wording right here. I, I move that we vote to adopt the new board committee appointment policy.
Second.
With the change of designation to exception.
Oh, yeah.
As amended.
That was my change. Thank you. That was my change. I think that was the only, that was the only formal change was just, yeah, modified to indicate on item seven, that it's unless a special exemption is granted. And further clarifying at the end of the first sentence, that it's a scheduled meeting of the board of selectmen after the required two-week notice period is ended.
Good.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, it passes. All right. Now we have our committee reappointments.
So on this, we're looking for reappointment of the current Bay Colony Rail Trail Advisory Committee.
And this is, this is for one year.
One-year appointment.
And this presumably would be the last year for this committee if the rail trail is constructed by next July.
I think they would agree with you wholeheartedly. I think they have repeatedly to be disbanded.
Right, okay.
I'm going.
All right. Any questions, comments on this committee? Anyone? Anyone? No? And just for, if anyone in Zoom land is looking to comment on any of these committees, please just put it in the Q and A so I can see it when we come down to that committee list. So let's have a motion, Gus, on the Bay Colony Rail Trail Advisory Committee.
I move that we reappoint the members of the Bay Colony Rail Trail Advisory Committee for another year.
Second.
All in favor?
It was specified in that list, if you're not going to read the names.
Oh, okay. As specific, can I get away with that, or should I? I'd rather not read everybody's name.
They were, they were attached to the agenda and
Well, as long as the motion says it's attached to the agenda, that's fine.
I move that we reappoint the members of the Bay Colony Rail Trail Advisory Committee as delineated on the list that accompanied the meeting agenda.
Second again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Board of Health, we have a reappointment for Carol Reed, and then for Minakashi Chivokula as an associate member, and Jeff Kane as an associate member. Any questions or comments on Board of Health members? I'm grateful that we don't have all resignations in people after the past year.
Our fingers crossed comes on a commission.
All right, I move that we reappoint the three members of the Board of Health.
Well, one member and two associate members.
Sorry, sorry. I move that we reappoint the one member and two associate members whose appointments expire at the end of 2021 as listed in the listing that accompanied the meeting agenda, and as called out by Chairman Mark Cucci for a three-year reappointment in the case of Carol Reed, one-year reappointments in the case of the associate members.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next is the Capital Budget Committee. And as I said, so the, the current members of the Capital Budget Committee include three town employees who are not residents of Medfield.
We're not doing that until August 3rd.
Yeah, we're going to hold that until August 3rd, sorry.
Terrific.
There are a few in this list that we're going to, we're going to
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't read over to, I, I didn't, I didn't understand what recommended action August 3rd meant. Now I understand. Moving right along. The Collective Bargaining Committee. And so here we have, this is for tonight, right?
Correct.
I'm still on it. Tremendous. So here we have
So here you also, we also have special designations for representation on this committee.
Mm-hmm.
So your representation has always been the two chiefs, town administrator, a member of the personnel board, and we are recommending the HR director beyond there as well.
All right. So, so I would say this would be an example where we'd want to make an exception for non-residents of the town to have the, the chiefs and the town administrator and the HR director on this committee. Does anyone disagree?
Nope.
Gus?
Nope.
Comments?
Policy's already in action.
Can I just ask, what does this actual, this committee actually do? I just was curious, like, what the role of the committee is, if you
We, we collectively bargain with our unions, and then negotiate, negotiate the police and fire contracts and make a recommendation. This is, this is the management and the management labor negotiation.
And it's, it's an advisory committee. So the committee meets with the board of selectmen, discusses what they're going to offer in collective bargaining, and then reports back with, repeat, wrote, monthly or tries to report back in negotiations, and then at the end offers the agreement to the selectmen to decide whether or not they'll take it to town meeting.
There are a lot of meetings involved. Yep.
Okay, I move that we reappoint Chief Garette, Michael Markucci, Chief Carrico, and Michael Pastore, and Christine Trierweiler, and appoint Mark Fisher and Kathy Vandenboom to a one-year term on the Collective Bargaining Committee.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? I, I think Mark is the personnel board representative.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right. Now the Community Choice Aggregation Committee. So we did not get any interests in this committee.
I don't think we have any yet.
Not yet. It was posted on the website. Haven't heard anything.
Okay. Well, since we're going to be issuing this RFP, we should appoint the committee. Again, the one non-resident proposed is District Town Administrator Nick Milano on this committee. And the purpose of this committee is to, we have, we're going to take it up later, is to vet the RFP responses and then move the Community Choice Aggregation through for approval. Any comments or discussion on the Community Choice Aggregation Committee? And we will still take applications if more people are interested.
Right.
So, but we can appoint this committee.
And just, and just to be clear with Nick, he is a voting member?
I think so. And I think the good reason is, right now, we would otherwise have two, and this needs to be a tiebreaker, to have an odd number. He's also guaranteed to show up for these meetings because it's part of his job. So, we have a motion.
I move that we appoint Megan Sullivan, Robert Winograd, and Nick Milano to a one-year term on the Community Choice Aggregation Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Community Gardens Committee, no?
We actually appointed them at the last meeting, so they're good.
Great.
And we are advertising for more members so that we have a larger committee than two.
Okay. Next is the Elderly Taxation Aid Committee. There's a recommendation here to dissolve the committee.
Correct. It is a committee of all department heads, which seems a little silly to have a committee like that. They have not met, I talked to Georgia and Roberta, and they have not met since at least, the best they could come up with, maybe 2007, and maybe 2009, but they weren't sure, they really have not had a purpose since we started the tax work-off program.
Okay. But is it, is it still on all of your resumes that you're on the elderly taxation aid committee?
Absolutely.
Fifteen-year service on the elderly taxation aid committee. All right, any objection to dissolving this committee?
My only question is, once there's no longer a need for this aid, does that mean the seniors don't have to pay taxes anymore? Or is it?
I'm not sure if that's in the charter, but I'll get back to you.
All right. All right. We have a motion?
I move that we dissolve the Elderly Taxation Aid Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We're going to defer the Kingsbury Pond Committee to August 3rd. We have a recommendation to dissolve the Medfield Animal Control Study Committee.
So you actually have not reappointed this committee since 2019, but it's still been carried on our books. This was originally the committee put together to review the leash bylaw at the Medfield State Hospital. Since at this point, we have not done anything since 2019 on it, I would recommend that you dissolve it. And if we decide to investigate the leash law again at some point, that we form a new committee.
Okay.
They, they did have recommendations that we just somehow never got implemented.
I, I ended up basically stepping in and, and basically rewriting the parts of the bylaw that I felt were critical to the town's safety. So we did substantial, adopted a substantial amendment to the bylaw.
But then nobody wanted to put it forward to town meeting, so we tabled it.
Three-nine town meeting.
Yeah.
Could you circle like that again, then, Mark?
No, no. What I, what I did, what, mine was amended, but that committee was still working.
Right. Okay.
All right.
Ready?
Yep.
I move that we dissolve the Medfield Animal Control Study Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next is the Medfield Emergency Management Planning Committee.
Okay, so this is reappointing the department heads that are represented on the committee, as well as you have two new letters of interest, and this has been advertised for over two weeks. And Jeremy Marsette has indicated interest in joining it, as well as Andrew Kelleher.
Okay. And what does this committee do? Is this committee we're required to have by MIMA?
We're required to have, and this is what Chief Carrico operates, and some of what the Board of Health done, has done in the past for this, was able to fall under Carrico's, part of his process when we took it over from the police department.
So to our point about exemptions and things like this, this is a committee that's primarily made up of people who are not residents of the town.
Correct.
But they don't, they, basically, I'm not, is it, it's not advisory, but they don't spend money either, right?
Correct. We are, we would make any, any changes to any plan would come to the board of selectmen for, for adoption.
Right. But I mean, I think it, is it, it seems like it's a technical committee. It's not a
It is.
opinion-having committee. It's a, where do you go when it floods committee?
Right.
And when there's a fire, what do you do? And it would probably make sense to have people of technical expertise on there rather than just people with interest in emergencies.
Right. And those of us that know our buildings and know what, what our response would be based on that.
Yeah.
Chris, where is the, now that we don't have a MIMA facility up at the state hospital, where is the backup?
Fire department.
Fire department.
And the Board of Health member is blank. Is that because we needed to make sure that Carol Reed or somebody like that got reappointed first before we
No, they just, I just haven't had a chance to put it on their agenda to make sure they appointed. I didn't want to add anything to their plate during COVID, so I figured we'd come out of that emergency, and then I would talk to them about other emergencies.
Would you like more emergencies?
Okay.
So.
So we'll appoint that as soon as I have a chance to talk to them.
Okay. We have a motion.
Yes, I move that we reappoint Chief Carrico, Chief Garette, Marie Scolay, Dr. Marsden, Roberta Lynch, Christine Trierweiler, and Amy Collarin, and appoint Jeremy Marsette and Andrew Kelleher to one-year terms on the Medfield Emergency Management Planning Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Energy Committee being deferred to August 3rd. The Medfield State Hospital Building and Grounds Committee.
And these are all reappointments for the existing committee.
Ready? I move that we reappoint the members of the Medfield State Hospital Building and Grounds Committee as listed in the listing that accompanied the meeting agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now we have a defer of the Development Committee to August 3rd. And we have a recommendation to dissolve the Medfield State Hospital Environmental Review Committee.
So my recommendation on dissolving this committee is this committee, again, has not met probably since the early 2000s and was a precursor to the Mediation Committee. Now that the Mediation Committee has been working on the environmental part of the process, I don't think you need to have this committee anymore.
They have met since 2010.
Okay. I knew, I knew it was a fairly long time ago. I think that John is on the Mediation Committee, and we can extend an invitation to Deb or Ralph if they'd like to join the Mediation Committee and bring that background. But I don't think you need to actually have this committee anymore.
Okay.
I move that we dissolve the Medfield State Hospital Environmental Review Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, the Medfield State Hospital Master Planning Committee. Recommendations to dissolve. I thought we'd already done that, but
I don't know if we officially dissolved it. I know they requested it and we talked about it, but
So I think what happened on this one is, a year ago, we kept the committee active because the Development Committee, it made sense to keep the committee active so that the Development Committee could tap the expertise of the members of the Master Planning Committee. So we kept the Master Planning Committee. And then what happened is Pat Casey and Randy Carg both joined the Development Committee. So basically, we brought that knowledge in through the two of them, which is why I don't think we need the committee now. Now Randy's moving out of town, so we're down to Pat Casey with that. But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be hard to ask somebody else from the committee to join if, if it got to that.
Makes sense. All right. Any questions, comments, discussion? All right. Hearing none, motion.
I move that we dissolve the Medfield State Hospital Master Planning Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Next is the Medfield State Hospital Mediation Committee.
And we would, we would ask to reappoint Mediation Committee and the Negotiating Committee.
I guess my question is, I mean, the Negotiating Committee that I'm on hasn't met for as long as the Environmental Review Committee.
So we had, we'd had some discussions about whether or not we needed to have the Negotiating Committee, but there's still some, some items in the LDA that have not been finalized. So I think it's important to keep that committee there until that's finalized.
Assist on meetings this year, then.
I, I will let you and Bill coordinate that.
All right, we have a motion.
I move that we reappoint John Thompson, Ann Thompson, and William Masaro to the Medfield State Hospital Mediation Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now then, yeah.
Yep. I move that we re, we reappoint John Harney, William Masaro, and Oslah Peterson to the Medfield State Hospital Negotiating Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Medfield Outreach Advisory Committee.
And these are all reappointments. Catherine Waters would be, she's a senior, a rising senior at the high school. She should be a one-year appointment.
Yep.
Okay. I move that we reappoint Molly Frankel, Kathleen Cahill, Michelle Maganello, Liz Sandeman, and Kathleen Thompson, and appoint Catherine Waters as an associate member of the Medfield Outreach Advisory Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Deferring the Wildlife Committee and Memorial Day Committee to August 3rd, which brings us to a recommendation to dissolve the Open Space and Recreation Committee.
So at this point, the open space and recreation plan has been submitted and finalized. And so we're saying that we should, we would recommend that you dissolve this committee at this point and reconstitute when it's time to do the next open space and recreation plan.
Okay.
I move that we dissolve the Open Space and Recreation Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Safety Committee. Yep.
I move that we reappoint Chief Garette, Marie Scolay, Christine Trierweiler, and Steve Caskey as members of the Safety Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Bylaw Review Committee, review goals and compositions. So we're deferring that. Master Planning Committee, deferring that. Transfer Station and Recycling Committee.
So this, the only item that's going to change on here is Megan Sullivan notified us today that she would like to not be reappointed to the committee.
Okay.
And we will advertise and make a recommendation for an interested party.
All right. So we'll appoint everybody except Megan to this committee.
Just as an aside, I haven't been paying attention, but ex officio members don't get reappointed. They just keep showing up.
Uh, we usually reappoint them for one year.
So I'm going to add
Although Mark will explain to us that that, we really shouldn't have to, because it means by virtue of the office you hold, you're automatically on the committee, right, Mark? You were just about to tell us that.
Assuming you actually, assuming you actually had a written definition of these committees, you're absolutely right.
Right.
But Bill suspended
In the committee charter, right.
You should reappoint.
Right.
Because this is all oral tradition.
Right, right. Okay.
So my, my question with this was, I, I noted that they were looking for more administrative support. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't make sense to have the operator, that fellow Johnny, attend their meetings.
Uh, no, I think that when they're looking for administration support, they're actually looking for me to attend their meetings.
I think they're looking for, no, I don't think it is you, actually.
I attend all their meetings and
It's me. Yeah, they would like me to attend.
Oh, you guys know more than I do.
I host all their meetings, honestly.
I, I heard it was Maurice or Bobby.
We have a motion, Gus?
Okay, I move that we reappoint the members of the Transfer Station and Recycling Committee with the exception of Megan Sullivan, who is asked to step down from the committee as listed in the listing that accompanied the meeting agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now we have a recommendation to dissolve the Wireless Communications Study Committee.
We have a recommendation in its place. Since it's currently just Dave Maxon and myself, I would like you to appoint Dave as the Wireless Communications Advisor to the Board of Selectmen, and he will fall under the individual appointment versus committee appointment.
So can we put that on our agenda for next time?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you going to table that one until next time, or dissolve the committee tonight? Sorry, Chris McPhee-Potts.
Are you making a pitch for keeping it?
Well, I think what's interesting, I've been doing some research on, on public access stations and also with regard to cable advisory committees, and across the Commonwealth, there are 280 public cable advisory committees that report basically to the Board of Selectmen or to the mayor. And their role is really to, I was looking at Concord's as a sample, you know, their role is to be sort of the voice of the community, to monitor the effectiveness of services, help the Board of Selectmen ensure that the services comply to the franchise agreement and safeguard the public interest in community television, and then also promote quality telecommunications services. So I think there is a, there is a value in having an advisory, community advisory committee of some sort.
So I think that is probably a little different than this one.
Yep.
In this one, Dave has really just been when we do cell towers.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
This is a zoning bylaw and it's enforcement, basically.
Yeah, but I, I know the committee you're, you're talking of, and does Concord have, is there public access, a separate 501(c)(3), or are they a town?
I don't know, I mean, like I said, I just looked at the.
Yeah, I mean, Dave, Dave kind of negotiates, he negotiates our cell tower leases, basically, is his main.
Yeah, that's all he does, okay.
Main role.
Yeah, I think, I think it's at disavantage when you look at these committee lists and you're like, what do they do?
Yeah.
Well, that's part of, you might see that pop up on.
Right, yeah.
I don't remember.
Because Dave has multiple hats, and we have been involved in cable access license agreements, he's involved in those as well, but that's, we're in a different hat.
But I, I think, I think your recommendation is a good one, because it's, that's what he does anyway.
Right.
Yeah, so.
That's what he's been functioning, he used to have a lot more members on the committee, but they've moved out of town, so.
Right. We only have so many cell tower leases as well.
Right.
So unfortunately, we'd like to have more. All right.
We actually, the real work of that committee was, we totally rewrote the bylaws several years ago, and that's where we needed all that input from multiple people with technical backgrounds.
So that raises a question that I've had recently, which is when we rewrote the bylaw, why did we open up to Sam Whites or whoever it is that built the cell tower on their land? Town's losing lots of money every year to that cell tower. If we read the bylaws, so it had to be on the town land, the 30 acres.
You couldn't, you could not legally.
You can't do that?
Do that. You've got to give them, I mean, you can say that municipal land is one, one site, but you cannot limit it to that, it raises federal issues.
Right, because it's, I mean, it's partially relocated by the Telecommunications Act of 1996, right?
We could have carefully selected the private property that was included to get the desired result.
As, as it is, we have a fair number of them, I mean, so, but not as many as that one, that one's got a lot, that's a very valuable cell tower. All right, do you have a motion, Gus?
Okay, I move that we dissolve the Wireless Communications Study Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, last page, Boards and Committees Created by Town Bylaw, Master Laws, Charter, and Others.
So in this, Catherine Scott, who is a current associate member of the Conservation Commission and has submitted a letter of interest in completing Rob Agler's term through June 30th, 2022, this was, did we advertise this one?
Yes.
So it was advertised, and she's an associate.
Right, and there was not a stream of people coming to apply.
And we did note that we are, they are looking for new associate members as well, so.
All right.
Do two votes, one to.
Sure.
Yes.
I move that we appoint Catherine Scott to complete Rob Agler's term, which expires in June 30th, 2022, on the Conservation Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll just note, there's an extra P in a point there. I don't, I don't think it affects the legality of the appointment, but just to note that.
And I move that we reappoint Robert Kennedy Jr. and George Darrell to three-year terms on the Conservation Commission.
All in favor?
Yep.
Opposed? All right. Historical Commission.
And this is a reappointment of Seth Mean, who's co, currently co-chair for three years.
Mm-hmm.
I move that we reappoint Seth Mean to a three-year term on the Historical Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Permanent Planning and Building Committee.
We have two reappointments.
Two reappointments.
Ready?
Mm-hmm.
I move that we reappoint Mike Quinlan and Mike Weber to three-year terms on the Permanent Planning and Building Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. OPEB Trust Fund. Now, we must have had a lot, we, we, we must have had a lot of interest in this one, it really is. And again, there, so there are two.
It's real money, as you know.
There are two non-residents included here, Christine and Joy, I think, given that this committee does have kind of a technical accounting function, I think it makes sense to have the town accountant and the town administrator on the committee, I don't know if anyone disagrees, I think it's a reasonable exception, they don't spend any money. All right, ready, Gus?
Can I do it?
Yeah, go right ahead.
I move that we reappoint Georgia Kalivas, Michael Pastore, Gustav Murby, Joey Rashudo, and Christine Trierweiler as members of the OPEB Trust Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. There we go. Oh, Mark, ex officio trustees. All right, next up, vote to approve the fiscal year 2021 appropriations transfer request for the Police Department.
Correct, this is in the amount of $3,797.73, and this was due to the unexpected retirement, vacation sick payout of Detective, uh, Sergeant John Carey, sorry.
All right, and he has officially retired, right? He is now retired. Congratulations to John Carey. Gus, do you have a motion?
Excuse me. I gotta get to the right one, sorry about that.
Number 10.
Number 10, oh, I move that we approve a fiscal year 2021 appropriations transfer request for the Police Department.
All in favor?
Yep.
Opposed? All right. Next, vote to release the Request for Proposals for Community Choice Aggregation Energy Broker Services. Pete, any questions or comments on this one? Gus?
I had two, I had two comments and questions. One, and these are, actually, they're not really questions, so I, this is editorial stuff, the May 20, first point, May 2021, town meeting authorized the development of a community choice aggregation plan for the town, community choice aggregation, rather than say it will enable the town, because we don't know what's going to happen, I would have said is intended to enable the town to procure electricity on behalf of its residents and businesses at a more competitive price than they would be able to negotiate as individuals. So this is all just editorial and for accuracy.
Well, that's the, that's the committee charter, I don't think we're doing that now. We're doing this.
Sorry.
Yes, I have to, we can.
Sorry, no, 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 no.
Yeah.
I just had that out of sequence, that's all.
I would give you editorial comment, Nick, on the, on the charter, the charter's not even on the agenda, Gus.
No, that's just for you to review.
That's just for your review and edification.
Well, I just reviewed it, you want me to say anything?
You've reviewed it and you've edified us, so there we go.
You've been notified.
All right.
Yeah, that's why, I thought, I said, I don't have any questions there. I had a question, comment and a question. On item three of the criteria.
Yep.
It says, under highly, highly advantageous, it says, with renewable content provided to the maximum extent possible from solar and wind projects in Massachusetts and New England and from renewable, from renewable sources eligible for Massachusetts Class 1 Rex and located in New England. The question I have is, why do we care where our solar energy comes from? If we can get a better deal for solar energy from outside of New England, what's driving that?
So that's why this would be highly advantageous, if they can get a good enough price on Class 1 Rex. The goal of having a preference for either Massachusetts or New England is that by increasing the demand for green Class 1 Rex in Massachusetts and New England, you're increasing the demand for suppliers to switch over to green production. So by increasing the load for Class 1 Rex that are higher threshold, it's better for the New England area to keep encouraging development of clean energy products, rather than just saying, Texas wind is great, let's just go buy some Texas wind. So it's a little bit about getting a good price while also elevating, helping elevate the green economy here.
So the part of that.
But this is, but this, though, this is the, this, I'm not going to interrupt, but this is for an RFP with a broker.
Correct.
This is not for the actual thing. So I think, I think you're saying, we want to have a broker who has a track record of success procuring New England power.
Right, and then, and then the broker should have that track record of success, because if that's going to show up in the plan, we're going to want them to help us navigate how that should be in the plan or not, but these are decisions made for later, but what we're looking for right now is a broker who has that track record and experience.
So, so what was, what prompted my question was, first off, there is probably more cost effective solar energy, if our goal is to get solar energy in the country and become energy independent, and if we will do that by having things like community choice aggregation, be it offering electricity at an attractive price to consumers here in town, to the extent that we are using solar energy sources that are not as cost-effective, because they happen to be in Massachusetts, that to me translates into a higher cost to the consumer than it might otherwise be the case. So if the goal is to maximize solar energy usage, which I think is what the goal is, or for, to minimize carbon-type energy, the idea that we're favoring Massachusetts, I'm trying to understand whose issue are we supporting, and is it at the cost of the consumer?
I think at this stage, what we're looking for is a broker to come in and say, that may, all may be true, but if you, if you work with me, you can still make it work on the financial side. So at the next stage, when we're putting pen to paper on what the plan's going to look like and what we're actually going to procure in terms of electricity, we'll want to make sure we're, you know, that we're balancing the financial and the green sides of things, but what we're looking for at this stage is a broker who is knowledgeable enough to be able to navigate these markets and do the best that they can for the town when they go out to the market.
If you were balancing cost and green, you'd be looking for the cheapest energy you can find. I'm still looking for the reason why Massachusetts is being put forward, because I don't think it serves either of those purposes, and I think it serves a third purpose, and I'm just wondering what that purpose is.
No, and I, so when we're putting the plan together, this is when all these things will come into play, but if we have a broker who can help us kind of peel that apart and determine whether that's the right option for the town, I think is advantageous. That's why we regard it as highly advantageous.
Okay, then the second, okay, let's leave that one, then the fourth item, reference checks, under responsive, the responsive is two or more references were not satisfied with the proposer's performance, it's impossible for anyone to not be responsive to this criteria. It should, it should be, you're responsive. It should be you're responsive if you have, you know, two, or if you want to say three, but they can have 20 and they're still responsive, because it's more than two, so, okay? All right.
My understanding is a limited number of.
You want my markup?
I'll take it.
Limited number of.
Right, so we, we want to vote to release this as amended?
Yeah.
Do you have any problem with Gus's comments, Pete?
The first one, you can ignore, I hear what you said, philosophically, I'm still skeptical, but I don't.
I would agree with you, but where, that's where the plan comes into place.
Yeah, so maybe a motion to release the RFP as amended with your edits.
Okay, so I move that we approve the release of the Request for Proposals for Community Choice Aggregation Energy Broker Services with the amendment I submitted on item four in the criteria.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Finally, a vote to approve Chapter 90 reimbursement requests for the ADA self-evaluation and the paving of High Street. Questions, comments, discussions on this one?
Only made the point, that's actually two reimbursements, one for $45,325 and the other one for $174,626.81.
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
I move that we vote to approve Chapter 90 reimbursement requests for the ADA self-evaluation in the amount of $45,325 and the paving of High Street in the amount of $174,626.81.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye, opposed? All right, it passes. Meeting minutes. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight sets of meeting minutes to approve.
I, with apologies, totally screwed up on that third page, I have not, with everything else I read, I did not.
You were too busy right, working on the goals, looking at the meeting minutes.
It was 149 pages, yeah, it was, I just totally, usually I get them done first, and I marked them down, and I didn't mark them down, which tells me I didn't get them done, I apologize.
Well, we will carry those over to the next time. Town Administrator Updates.
I just have a couple of updates, Norfolk County notified us yesterday, they have made a choice in that they will draw the money directly for their ARBA funding. I don't think that letter is clear, whether or not they're just automatically giving that money to us, or if they are expecting us to apply with our projects. Obviously, we're going to suggest that they just pass it along to us, but we'll wait for the second part of that before I get nervous, so. Norfolk Hunt Club will be using some of the parking areas up at the State Hospital beginning at 7:00 a.m. on Sunday, and they should be out by noon, but if anybody sees an excessive amount of horse trailers up there, they are doing an active hunt on Saturday. Most of the hunt will actually be in Dover and Sherburne, it won't affect Medfield. And the other one was just, Mo notified us this afternoon or this evening that we have taken off the water restriction.
When the river is actually flooding.
Yes.
And you can't drive down my street, then you're allowed to water your lawn, at that point.
We're closing streets for water.
Right, okay. All right, very good. Next meeting dates, October, August 3rd, August 17th, August 24th, and then we will schedule a separate meeting with Gus and I to finalize the LDA and the purchase and sale agreement. And Selectmen Reports, Pete?
And my first Friday of the month, Selectmen Office Hour is at the center, in person, again. I actually finally reviewed the ADA self-evaluation report, I think that raises some questions that we need to talk about. We've been building some buildings that aren't compliant, which has kind of struck me as odd, really new buildings. And then lastly, had a call with the MSBA today on the follow-up to the letter that I sent, signed, sending them, oh, maybe a month or two ago.
Gus? Think I have anything to report, usually get up to more mischief over a two-week period than this, but I don't think I have anything to report.
I would note, first of all, to wish a happy birthday to the town greeter and former Fire Chief Joe Ryan, who's turning 97 today, so happy birthday to Chief Ryan. Secondly, Christine and I and Sarah and then a bunch of Matt Borelli, the Borellis and the developers of the Aura, we met with Congressman Auchenclos over at the intersection of West Street and North Meadows Road last Thursday, or Wednesday, last week, to show him the intersection for which he has put in an earmark for the reconstruction of that intersection. There was not an accident during the half an hour or so that we were there, but there had been three the previous week, so it was a relatively short visit, and the project is on the list, so if the infrastructure bill passes, we'll get, is it 1.4?
1.4 million.
1.4 million for the reconstruction of that intersection. We've also already qualified under the Housing Choice, Housing Choice Grant for the redesign of that intersection. So the engineers from the Batty Group were there who are doing the redesign of that intersection. Paul McHeckney, who's in a, right on the corner there in a butter on the far side.
He's the first clover leaf, I understand, in Medfield.
So.
It's been recommended.
We'll see how it goes. Let's get the money first. And, and so that, that was a, that was a good, that was a good visit. We talked a little bit about the two housing developments over there. I think he was favorably impressed with the efforts we've made with those two lip projects. The Aura is, is going up. I think the, the estimate was that maybe there'd be people moved in in January. So I think they, they're dealing with the same lumber and other issues that everybody's dealing with, but are continuing to, to progress and make, make progress. And I think that Matt Borelli was saying that the Hillside Village was mostly rented, maybe two vacancies.
Two vacancies.
Two vacancies. So, so that was a good visit. Otherwise, I don't think I have anything to report. Our next meeting again, August 3rd, although we will schedule one for, for the special issue in between now and then. Thank you to all who joined us via the Zoom, and we will see you all next time. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman?
No.
Executive session.
Oh, right, 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 right. I forgot the executive session. So I declare that we need to go into executive session for the purpose to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of property on Ice House Road. Controlling the discussion in open session will be detrimental to the bargaining position of the town, and I have so found.
I move that we go into.
Oh, and the open session will not resume at the conclusion of the executive session. Sorry.
I move that we go into executive session to discuss the purchase, sale, or lease of property on Ice House Road. The chairman has determined that public, I didn't do this with my script here, the public open meeting to discuss this would be detrimental to the interests of the town. And the meeting, the open meeting will not resume at the conclusion of the executive session.
Second.
This is going to be a roll call. Yes? Mr. Peterson?
Well, actually, if you're, I'm assuming you're not going to participate in this, so you probably shouldn't vote on this either.
Because you're, you have to accuse yourself.
Yeah, because this session is about East and South.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, now we're going to reduce.
You shouldn't even vote on going in.
Okay. So I will second your motion, Gus.
Mr. Markucci.
Aye.
Mr. Merby.
Aye. There we go. All right. Thank you all. Good night.